So we will get started this evening. And we welcome each one of you and our council and all the staff and all the others that are here. And so at this time, we are going to call the meeting to order and have an invocation. And so we will have a prayer. And ask Secretary Famy if she would offer a prayer for us this evening.
Creator God, Creator Jesus, come to your presence. Thank you for another day of life and all the many blessings that you let me art up to this time. And I pray that you would be with us, that you could bless us with your Holy Spirit, that you take care of business of the paths of our people. Wanting something good for them, like that Creator God, and being leaders, that you could bless each one of us in our mind and our heart, and that we could always think about our people and in our future generations and the decisions that we make here, like that Creator God. And then I pray for all those that are in need of a prayer this evening here Creator God, whatever their need may be, big or small, that Creator God that you would bless them for us, like that Creator God. So I ask and pray these things, and I may meet your presence, like Creator Jesus.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, we will have a roll call, please.
Bruce Pratt?
Here.
Darryl Wildcat?
Here.
Famy Littleson?
Here.
Angela Thompson?
Here.
Sammy Adston?
Oh, excuse, sorry.
Donna Hare?
Here.
Adrian Spotters-Horsefield?
Here.
Leanna?
Here.
All right.
And I will declare a quorum. We have enough for a quorum. So at this time, we will go to item number three, and that's approval of the agenda. And I have three things to add to the agenda. First one is approval of Resolution 16104, Unicot Membership. And this will be item number 10. And then item number 11 is approval of Amendment of Resolution 1693. All right, there we go. 1693, TDC Fee to Trust. That's item number 10. And then item number 11 is approval of PBC Budget Mod Number 8. Cindy, do you have an extra pen? I lost my pen.
1693 is Fee to Trust?
1693 is Fee to Trust, yes.
And then 1694 is budget?
16104 is the Unicot Membership. 104. Thank you. Are there any other items? If not, we can have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make that motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Darryl Wildcat?
Yes.
Famy Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spotters-Horsefield?
Yes.
Leanna?
Yes.
Okay, the agenda is approved. We will move to item number four, and that's the Council President Report. I would just like to say that I want to thank the nation for allowing me to go to the Tribal Leaders Summit this past weekend. It was my privilege to be able to be in attendance there at the Tribal Leaders Summit with President Obama on Monday. And we had pre-meetings on Sunday. And that was a wonderful honor. This Pawnee boy was able to shake the hand of the President. All right. In four days, I haven't washed his hand. And so got up at 5:00 a.m. and got in line at 6:15 and stood there for a couple hours, but I was able to get on the front row. So that was a real blessing. And there was a lot of discussion, and the main discussion is, for one, honoring the President and the things that he has accomplished in Indian country over the last eight years. But now, they, at the meeting, they were calling it 117 days until the new administration will come in and, you know, trying to, what they call finishing the term, the next 117 days, and trying to get things accomplished. One was a memorandum of opinion on the scope of the federal trust responsibility. Another one was the exempt, the tribe from the employer mandate of the Affordable Care Act. The other was to develop a long-term strategic plan for IHS. Another one was landing the trust in Alaska, taking the final action. Another one was protecting the sacred places for improvement, Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, and tribal consultation, Indian Water Settlement Act, tribal water codes, the Bears' Heirs National Monument Designation, climate change, the guidance, final guidance on tribal arrest authority. All of these things, and there was others there, of trying to get these actions, these initiatives, these things pushed through before the end of President Obama's term. And the other thing discussed was the transition into the new president, whoever that may be, coming in and really trying to make some inroads and push forward Indian issues with whoever the new administration is. And so that was the agenda of NCAI and the tribal leaders. A lot of things were shared. And so would say here, to, there's a few here, but those that may be watching here on YouTube, our council meeting, you know, get out and vote. Get out and vote. Vote, vote, vote. Get your friends, get your relatives, get everyone that you can to get out and vote. This is a very important election coming up for the Indian nations. We've made a lot of progress, and we sure hate to see it go to their side. And so those were the things of how things are going to play out. And so was able to do that this last few days, came back the other day, and then got ready for the meeting here. And so, any questions? So I will move on to item number five, and that's the Business Council Committee and Travel Reports. And I'll start with Adrian down off this end, please.
I'm pretty busy. I know I'm working mostly with the Cultural Committee on getting things organized for our Rikara relatives when they came down this past weekend. And I don't know if I attended the budget meeting or not. I'm pretty sure I did. I have it on a weekly basis. But that's all I have. It's just the, they had two or maybe three meetings with the Cultural Committee for our Rikara relatives. No travel.
All right. All right, well, thank you.
Well, I was supposed to go to that lead conference, but my daughter got sick, so I...
All right, we will move on to Famy, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
See, I attended the chief's meeting on the 17th. I was at the Rome Chief Building. And I didn't have a very long meeting. Looks like it was the reports that the Kipka Haki Chief and the Chawee Chief, who went up to Cannonball, North Dakota, gave their report on the things that took place and made a report on what had taken place, what they did, how things worked there, things like that. And then they're looking into, I guess the chiefs are wanting to do a handbook on how to be chief. So that was one of their topics that they discussed. And so I guess kind of, I guess rules or whatever, just talk about some incidents that happened in the past, and I guess things that they could go by. So that was the other topic discussed. Herb Asen came in and he gave a report on the Rikara visitation and what was going on with the CRD Division, the Cultural Resource Division, and just the things that they were doing. And about the Rikara visitation, inviting everybody out to come and participate, inviting the chiefs to come and participate in the Rikara visitation, or reunion, I think is what they were calling it. And then Deb Ekahog came in and she was talking about the quorum and that here in the near, I think it's the weekend of the 22nd in October. Yeah, see, the lady Ronnie, I think that's her name, who grows the corn for the Pawnees up in Nebraska.
O'Brien.
O'Brien, yeah, Ronnie O'Brien. She's going to be coming down, I guess bringing some of the corn that they harvest and grew for us up there in Nebraska. She's going to be bringing that down to her Pawnee around the 22nd, and that's also her birthday. So Deb had approached the chiefs and was wanting to have a hand game for her, and the chief, the head chief told her to go talk to CRD about it. Deb just kind of didn't come out and say it, but I guess she was trying to lead up before they booted her out, that, you know, she was wanting to use her hand game sticks, but they just kind of brushed her off right away. So she was just like, didn't know what to do then. And so I was, you know, I just told her, I said, well, you gotta, you know, express yourself a little better, you know, get your point across. So anyway, that's what she's wanting to do. I suggested that, you know, she, you know, just have a potluck or something and invite everybody, because, you know, I just told her, I said, you know, I'm real thankful for Ronnie O'Brien done a lot for the Pawnee Nation, and then she really helped in growing that corn and getting that, got that earth lodge belt and everything like that that she did for us, and that it was a real nice gesture and thought that she was thinking about for her for her birthday, and that she should follow through with it. So I think she might have went to see Herb Asen about it, you know. So hopefully that'll be happening sometime in the coming months. And then other than that, that was about all that they had discussed at the chief's meeting. And like I said, it was rather short, and they got through right away. And so then after that, I went on a surprise trip back to North Dakota, to Cannonball, myself, and the tribe didn't pay for nothing. My brother just asked me to go along to help him drive. They took some more supplies and some wood back up there to our Pawnee camp that we have up there. So we got to go back and spend a couple days back up there at Cannonball. And the camp has grown since we left a few weeks back. I think when we left after our stay up there, there was like 25 teepees that were up there along with all the other tents and everything. And when we went back up there, there were like 45 teepees up, and the camp was even bigger. I guess it just, you know, on weekends, a lot of people come in and they really fill it up, and then, you know, as I say, a few days, and a lot of them go home. But yeah, there was some more teepees up over there this last visit. And we just went up and spent a couple days and got the camp in order, got it kind of winterized, and then turned around and came back. So because of that, then I missed all my meetings that week. So, but it was, it was good to be back up there again and just say some more prayers and see the people that we have met and everything. And see, they're still, they're still carrying on, and a lot more people getting a lot more support and everything. So I was real glad to hear about that. And then just got back today from the lead conference over there in Tulsa. It was a very, very good conference. And I just learned so much, and just like, you know, I can't wait to write it down and just... I attended, there were three tracks. One had to do with the leadership tribal government role. The other one had to do with youth, and then the other one had to do with agriculture. So I attended the agriculture portion of it. And so they had easily three different sessions per day. And so it was just really informative. It's amazing what a lot of tribes are doing, and it just makes me anxious to jump on that boat and go that direction. And I really liked what I heard, and one of the main things they said is, you'll never be sovereign unless you can sustain yourself. And so that's how they started out, the agriculture part, you know, where the people there, like one of the ones that just really stands out the most is organization from the Pine Ridge Reservation. And of course, in all the movies, you see the, you know, the Pine Ridge Reservation and how poor it is, and how the people just, you know, they really, there's nothing there really except for them. And so they were saying their food is probably 99% is brought into them. And so they went through the whole plan where they developed a nonprofit organization, and through that, they brought in their youth. And all of these were all based off of their culture. It was because of their culture, because of their language, because of their youth, that they wanted something better for themselves and their people. And so they developed all these different agriculture plans, and it was just really, really, it was just awesome to me. So they started, they built a greenhouse there, and they're growing their own food, and they're raising chickens. And their chickens are all hens that lay eggs, and then the chickens have to keep, keep the bugs out of their gardens, and, you know, they use the chickens for fertilizer, you know. They just thought it through, all the way through, and it's just really amazing. And the greenhouse, they, you know, have greenhouses, and it was just really an amazing presentation where they're beginning, and they have, it's just so well planned out and laid out, and it was just really amazing. But probably in a couple days, because the conference ended today at 4:00, then they said they'll put everything up on their website, so hopefully we'll be able to get information off of there. But it wasn't only them, there's also a lot of tribes going to aquaphonics, and a lot of them, well, a lot of them, they're building greenhouses where they can grow food all year round. And the guys from Pine Ridge, they went down, they got their blueprints, and they went to see a man, a known architect for greenhouses in Nebraska, and they talked to him, and he showed them his blueprint of his greenhouse, and they liked it better. So he took them out to his greenhouse that he actually had built on his farm. And he was growing orange trees and lemon trees in his greenhouse in Nebraska. And if anybody knows weather in Nebraska, it's cold. Winter time comes, it's cold, like now, it's already jacket weather, you know. So that was just really amazing that he designed this greenhouse. And so he gave them the blueprints, and that's the greenhouse that they have up there in the Pine Ridge Reservation. And they got their youth involved, and they built it all themselves. They said, yeah, they would probably, you know, it cost them about a million dollars to build that, but they decided to build it themselves. So in there, they trained their youth and their community members who wanted to help. They trained them in carpentry and how to lay cement, and they built the whole thing themselves. It was really amazing, and through that, they saved all that money that they had. But it is a really amazing story, and I'm really excited to get the rest of the information on it. Jamie Hip was there. I got to visit with her for a little bit, and she did one of the presentations, and hers was about the policies that it takes to actually, if you're going to grow food to sell, to have in your community, then, you know, there's all kinds of policies that need to be written, and there's a lot of groundwork in that area that needs to be done. And so it was really kind of eye-opening, because a lot of people already got into it and growing the food and trying to sell it, and then they ran into all these roadblocks along the way. So it's kind of like, it's good to know, to have this information ahead of time, and then, you know, so we'll know what to expect and start working on that already, whatever direction we're going to go with the agriculture plan, whatever we're going to do. But I was really impressed, there's a lot of tribes in aquaphonics, and so they gave a presentation on that, and that's where you raise your fish and you grow the vegetables on top of the water. And so it was really interesting. They went through the whole process of it. One thing, they had a lot of information, but all the workshops were cut down, but their presentations were like an hour, hour and a half, so they were really talking fast and get as much information in as they could, you know, before they were cut off. But it was, it was really good, it was really interesting, and I look forward to, moving forward with some of these plans since they already have them in place. So that's my report. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Famy. And we'll move on to Darryl.
Good evening, everyone. Two weeks ago, I attended the grand opening of the Pidahoo Park over there by the Round House. Well-attended. Our executive director and a few of our council members were present, and quite a few tribal members. There was a lot of children present for this grand opening, and it was, it was really well-attended. And townspeople were present, and I had the privilege of cutting the ribbon. I hadn't been the only one standing around there. Anyway, it was, it was very enjoyable, and I don't, there was some refreshment served afterward, and it was very well, very, very well-attended, and just everybody enjoyed themselves, especially the children. I mean, they was all over that playground equipment, and they just, they just really enjoyed it, and so I know they'll have good use of it and make good use of it. And I know there's plans for a future development of that area, so that's something, looking forward to that. And that's all I had attended this past couple weeks.
Thank you, Darryl. Okay, we'll move on to, we'll move on to Angela.
The first trip that I attended was the Nikoa trip, and I went out on the 13th, the day after the elders flew out, so I could attend the council meeting on that day. Had a good time. It was a good conference. Everybody had, I was very surprised at the elders, and they could get up and get around and walk around and do all that. I mean, by the end of the day, I was just exhausted from all the walking. Everybody seemed to have a good time. I'm very impressed with the staff. Sunny, she was shuttling the tribal elders to and from the different, there was a casino right across the street, so she was going back and forth, they had a keen buffet there. And so that's where everybody wanted to eat. And she also took a group the next morning down to the Otos, allowed, paid for some of the tribal elders to go with them on this boat ride, just straight up to the falls. I mean, I would, we took it, and I thought we were, I said, how far are they going to take us up there? And you got drenched. And so they did that like around 8:30, 9:00 o'clock that morning, and so a group of them and the Otos paid for it. So we were, they were very thankful to the Otos for doing that. And, oh, just, just a lot of running around and going to the, to the conference. The ones we attended, we attended the luncheon, they honored the veterans as well. We attended one on elder abuse. We thought we were in the one for dementia, but they had canceled it, and they didn't tell us. But it was informative, good time. Met with Deb when I first got there, she provided me an update. Also met with Sunny as well, you know, just helping out as best I could, taking the elders, you know, who needed help and things like that. We did all meet at the very end of the, the very last day of the trip. We, we all bought hats, bought shirts, and we all wore the same shirts, and we took a group picture down by the falls. And so we all, we're all trying to get over there, trying to find, and then they had it blocked off because they, they were having an event that day. But it was a very good trip. Had a good time, enjoyed it, met with the elders up at the airport too, and they, they just had a good time. They just were all happy and smiling, so that was good. We had one incident where we did have to take one to the emergency room, but they were fine. Deb got back into the, to the hotel about 2:30 that morning and was up at, what, 8:00 or 6:00 o'clock that morning? I don't know how that, like I said, I'm very impressed. They were very, just kept, just wanted to go, you know, and they didn't want to leave. So it was a good trip, and I was very, I was very glad that they got to attend, and the ones that did, and sorry that the ones that couldn't, you know. But it was, it was a good trip. I also attended on the 12th, the scoping meeting for the bylaws, the Muzem bylaws, and we had PBC commissions and boards interviews that afternoon as well, on the 12th. And then, let's see, oh, met with Bank of America with finance in regard to the ATM payroll, payroll cards. And we also asked questions on what they offer in regard to investments, and that's a service that they also provide free of charge as, since we have accounts there with them. So we'll, staff will be following up with them and getting that information too. Let's see. And then we had a follow-up meeting on the 23rd. President Pratt was there for a short time, and then ended up just being Andrew and I finishing them up. The AG was at a conference in Sulphur. And so thank you to Andrew for finalizing those, those documents and making the changes that were needed and necessary, they're on the agenda tonight. So I appreciate all the work you all did on that. Attended the Rikara visitation Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Very good time. It was, the hand game was fun, they had a blast, the Rikaras just had a blast, a lot of them came up to us and just felt like it was coming home, like it was coming home. Got to witness the pipe ceremony on Saturday. That was, I'm very thankful to the CRD and to Adrian and all those involved that allowed us to be a part of that, to see our culture at its finest. And I guess the main thing that I got from that was the beauty of the pipe ceremony, but also listening to our elders around that, around that circle, talk and talk about what, what our future is, what needs to change, you know, and how we treat one another, how we talk to one another, and, you know, moving our things, our youth, things about our youth and our culture. It was good, it was good to hear those things, and it made my heart feel really good, so I was very honored to be a part of that. And also was honored to get up early Sunday morning and cook, you know, cook for them, thankful for the council members, Donna and Famy came over, and Adrian, you know, came over and helped cook, thankful to my family, and Marty came in, you know, we all, it all went smooth. We all had a part, and it all went smooth. Me and my aunt were the first ones over there, so we prayed that morning that things would just go good, and things went good. And so I was very honored to be able to do that. So thank you to the council for purchasing the food and allowing us to have the honor to do that for our Rikara relatives and our Pawnee people. It was very, very good. We were tired, though. Let's see, okay, I just got back from the lead conference, and I'm not going to go into, Famy went to the, the tracks that she went to. I went mainly on... she went to. I went mainly on track three, which was, uh, related to, uh, community engagement, community building, strengthening tribal and community, um, the, um, doing an annual report and, uh, impact statements, what all is involved. That's very interested, uh, interested me a lot because it talks about engaging the community and why we do those reports and what the purpose is. So I got a lot of information on that I would like to share with the rest of the council and the staff. They did provide some planning documents that you might be able to use in, you know, in any project. Uh, other thing I came out from that was, uh, fundraising opportunities. They talked about foundation and I've, I've already forwarded that information to our planning director to look into that to see as well. And, uh, there was another group that, um, that had presented and I believe it was on, um, no, that was something else, on the investment. And I had forwarded something to Andrew and he's going to follow up on that, some information that I got. So it was a good, it was my very first time to this type of, uh, First Nations Institute conference. It was very informative. I lo- I loved the format. Usually when I go to these conferences, there's so much information and so many things you'd like to pull you one direction. You want to go to all of them, but you can't. Uh, so I focused just on that track three. I did attend one, um, uh, on the, um, inspiring native youth and it was in regard to oral histories and documenting that. And it was the, um, help me out with the name Pasqueyaki, Pasqueyaki Project. And they, they got a group of youth together and did, um, oral, uh, interviews with our elders. And then they did it into a small film, which they entered into film festivals as well. And, um, they talked about the challenges in, in doing that task and, and some of the do's and the don'ts of that. So I, I thought that was very interesting. The other track was on grant, grant writing. So I, I felt like I knew enough about that. So I wanted to attend the, the native youth piece of it. So that's the only other one I, I deviated from, from that track. But it was a good, it was good. And I think our CRD could have benefited from it and possibly Deb, you know, she's into native you, uh, native foods. Um, we got, and it was, I liked the other format is that they, they set you down at tables and they fed you. And so you all kind of intermixed. And I got to sit with, uh, a young man from Olympia, Washington and, um, some, uh, gen- young men from, uh, Pine Ridge Reservation. Young men, uh, younger than me, you know? And it was very interesting of what they're doing on their reservations in regard to native health and food. Um, I learned about black moss and from Olympia, Washington, what it does to cleanse their digestives. And it's like they use it as a part of renewing or restarting, you know, when somebody passes. And that's the way he explained it. Talked about a foam berry that they make Indian ice cream up there with. And I guess it's kind of bitter. He said, when he first, when he first tried it, he said, mm, Indian ice cream started pouring on his plate. Well, he said, you know how you're, when you're in front of your elders, you could like clean up everything in your plate. He took a big old bite of that. He's like, oh no, I gotta eat all, because it's kind of bitter, I guess. But, um, just different things, you know, different people, meeting different people and seeing what they're doing on different reservations. It was a, it was a good meeting. So thank you for allowing me to attend. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, Ang- uh, Leanna. Thank you, Angela.
Hello. Hello there. YouTube, is it? I watched it. I watched the last meeting. It was fairly interesting. So I'll try to be
Interesting.
animated and smiling and a little more explanatory toward, whatever. So here goes. In fact, I fell asleep and I've got to finish watching it. So wake up.
You were that excited, yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll start with the health board. Uh, the report was, Travis Scott is still on assignment in the Great Plains area and it hopefully will last 30 more days. Um, the ambulatory visits were compared, were 6,961. That surprises me. Can't believe it. But current vacancies at the clinic are a PA nurse practitioner and a public health nurse. And, uh, the facility received minor damage from the earthquake. It's being assessed and resolved already now. Um, and then as each, each member gave their report, one that, that caught my attention was the Ponka tribe, which is, has secured a grant with Carol Nudel. Is it TMG grant?
[inaudible]
Yeah, okay. Anyway, not, that wasn't what caught my eye. But it's that they are working with the Citizen Potawatomi and the purchase of federal marketplace insurance for tribal members through Blue Cross Blue Shield. And I saw that with some other tribe besides the Citizen Potawatomi. Do you know? But, uh, what the other tribe is?
In Oklahoma?
I think so. But it really sounds like a good deal.
That has to be demonstration projects across the country.
Oh, okay.
That we might want to look at.
Okay.
It's very informative.
Yeah. Uh, I'm sure I had missed a few times because of my cousin Leroy Downs. He was in intensive care two, two weeks. He, he has struggled. He's doing well now. We met him at a restaurant this past week and he is getting around good. But I just want to say that his, he had Blue Cross Blue Shield insurance. And because of what they provided for him, I think it would really be nice if our tribe could furnish the same thing for each one of our tribal members. And let's see. And I also attended the budget meetings and that will be, um, discussed later, won't it? I attended the museum code meetings. Those were interesting, weren't they? And I appreciate Andrew taking care of the rest of it. And, um, let's see. Okay, I also attended the interviews for the museum board and for the tribal court. Um, I was disappointed that I wasn't able to visit, to attend the visitation this past weekend. My family had a, we had an engagement that was scheduled a couple of months ago before this was scheduled and I could not change it. We could not change it. And so I'm looking forward to next year. And it sure sounded like everyone had a good time, all refreshed and ready for the new season, cool weather. Um, let's see. Well, are there any questions? No? Okay, can I ask a question? I just wondered, since Adrian couldn't attend that meeting, the lead meeting, our conference, who attended it in place?
No, we weren't able to find
Nobody?
Our first choice, Jamie, she, she got back at the, uh, five o'clock on that Tuesday.
And, okay.
Said that she was leaving the next day for her wedding.
Okay.
So I just couldn't get in.
Okay. I just wondered. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leanna. All right, Donna.
Okay, Noah. I attended the, um, grand openings for the playground and the resource center. Uh, we had a HR meeting on the 19th, which, uh, the policies that we developed and approved, uh, or recommending to the council for approval are on the, later on the agenda. So I won't go into those. Um, I attended two of the three language and culture meetings that, that are being held on Tuesday nights and those are very good. I really like the way that, um, our two young men are approaching the language and, um, there's, they've been very well-attended. There've been a lot of people, uh, at, at the two that I've been to. There, I've had to get more chairs, had to run more copies. That's been a problem, but it was a really good problem to have that many people there. And, um, I attended the interviews. That's, that's all. No travel.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for the reports that were given. And, um, we will move to the, uh, item number, uh, six, the Pawnee Business Council travel request for approval. We'll start with you, Donna. We'll come back this way.
I have no request for travel.
All right. Leanna?
Let me see. I think I might. Um, October 19th to the 10th Annual Sooner Care Tribal Consultation in Katusa. And October 20th, no. That's all right now. The other one is called Thrice. Do you know about it, Bruce?
What?
Thrice. T-H-R-I-C-E.
No.
Okay. It's saved, I, I'm, um, I don't have the date right now, but I would be interested when I do find out. That's all.
Okay. Um, Angela?
Okay. Um, I too am interested in the Oklahoma Healthcare Authority Tribal Consultation meeting on the 19th as well as, um, another tribal consultation on October 27th in Albuquerque in regard to DOI Army Corps of Engineers and Department of Justice on, um, tribal input in regarding decision-making on infrastructure projects. So I think it's important that for us as a council, I don't know if we all need to go, but a group of us need to go to make a stance. And we may even want to, um, talk to our other, uh, tribal, um, in our, the Six Nations in this area to see if they can take a delegation up there as well and stand firm in unity in, uh, making sure that they establish, uh, federal protocol or regulations of tribal input when they're, um, issuing these leases, these permits that deal with, uh, infrastructure projects. So I, I throw that out to everybody, um, that I think it's important, especially with what we have going on here at home.
In the last meeting, uh, I think there was a report that the travel was getting low.
Yes.
So are there funds to transfer into travel or?
I would have to look at that, Donna. Uh, but, um, I would have to look at it.
Okay.
I don't know how, how we could, you know, we could car for or what. I don't know. That's just a thought.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the only, uh, other meeting, uh, coming up that I was interested in was in the, uh, the Oklahoma Business Summit. It's a Unicot meeting. It's October the 23rd through the 25th and it's here in Tulsa. And, uh, so that's the only one. Uh, also interested in, in what Angela was, um, um, referring to there in Albuquerque. Uh, but I have a, another meeting coming up then. So I don't know if I'd be able to attend, but, uh, yeah, we, we need some, uh, representation there. Darryl?
On, on October 27th.
I'd also like to, uh, request to attend the, uh, Oklahoma Healthcare Authority's Sooner Care, um, October 19th at the, um, Hard Rock Hotel Conference Center in Katusa. And next month on the, uh, October 9th through the 13th, I'd like to attend a national conference of American Indians in Phoenix, Arizona at that time.
That's already approved.
Has it been already approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to go twice?
Make it, make it twice. Make sure I'm there.
Sure wants to go.
I'm one. I'm one. I haven't been there before.
All right. Amy?
I don't have any, any travel.
All right. Adrian?
Um, I was very interested in going, uh, to Albuquerque, what Angela was talking about. Uh, but at the same time, we're having, um, down at, uh, the Windstar in Zacherville, the, uh, Travel Gaming Protection Network is having a three-day seminar on regulating woxi and mixed martial arts. And, uh, being that we are right, uh, you know, I want to make sure that, that our, uh, uh, sports commission is, is there and everything. If, if, um, if I know that they're going to be in attendance, you know, and, and going to see what's going on, then I have no problem riding with Angela. She'll let me ride with her, whoever, however that works out. So one of, one of those.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't know. It's, it's just going to depend on the sports commission. If, if they're going to go down there, then I'll go to Albuquerque. Then I'll, I'll go down there. That's it.
Okay.
And that's all on the 27th of October.
All right. Any other?
I, I would keep the Albuquerque one open because of the importance that Angela and yourself, you know, have stressed about that. So I would like to possibly look at that if possible.
And, and the reason why this is so important is because of what has transpired up there in North Dakota and the, the lack of consultation, the lack of, uh, the Indian tribes being, um, given adequate, um, input on, on all the things that, that has entailed and, and the mess that they're in up there now. And so, uh, you know, the, the tribes are fairly pushed hard at, um, you know, these agencies that they need to, they need to be receptive to, um, the trust responsibilities that, uh, they all have. And so these tribal consultations are, they're trying to get something done before the end of Obama's presidency and maybe have some, um, executive, um, power issued. And so, um, these are very important. So the tribal nations need to be heard. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, there's, uh, I just want to maybe, uh, suggest too that, uh, maybe this is something that Tipho should be involved with, uh, is going to as well because, uh, Andrew knows, you know, likes to have the, uh, bridge that they're going to be doing up there in, um, yeah, in Jonoa, right?
Oh, no, that's the, uh,
Loop River Bridge. So, you know, things like that, you know, that, that I know that he's going to be involved with. So I think it would be something too. Maybe, uh, Andrew might, let's, uh,
Okay.
Angela, if nobody else goes, I'll go.
Okay.
I just didn't want to be going all the time. Although I like going all the time. I was just trying to hold back in case, you know, somebody else might want to go.
Well, I was thinking I might. So one of us. Okay. Andrew too. I, I mean, I think that's a great idea that Tipho wouldn't, we, we thought about that too. But I don't know if you and he, him both can go. Cause we need, I mean, we need your hands-on in it. And we need staff to, um, help guide us in what we need to communicate to those agencies. Cause it's government to government. So think about it if you can.
Okay.
If I go, I'm just going to hit to ride with somebody.
Yeah.
Somebody say, Adrian, you can go. Jump in with me.
Of course.
All right. Good. Uh, motion?
Right, come on.
Motion's made by Famy. It's her second.
I'll second.
Adrian's seconds. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Famy Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Conson?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
Adrian Spitalhorst, too, yes?
Donna here?
Yes.
Okay. Good. The travel requests are approved. We move on down to item number seven, Pawnee Nation Executive Director Report.
It's just to come here, then it moves there.
Yeah.
Let me, let me, um, bring up one other thing. We, we have on the, on the, uh, and Cindy just reminded me, uh, we have on the agenda, the, um, Unicot membership dues and then the resolution. Uh, they have a Unicot meeting tomorrow in, uh, Stroud. And she reminded me that, uh, I was planning on going to that meeting, uh, tomorrow. So, um, add that to the, uh, requests.
Okay. And, and my discussion, I'll have it when we get to that line. Okay, and my discussion, I'll have it when we get to that line item, because I have some questions on that.
Okay. It's going?
Well, just then.
Oh, you mean on the resolution?
Well, just on, what do they do? I mean, what are they doing for us for that membership? And, I mean, I know, I know, I've seen one instance where I thought it was good that we were members of it in regard to Chairman Berry, you know, and his fight against the city of Shawnee, but I don't know how many times have they met? What are they doing for our membership? It's what, fifteen hundred?
Well, right now, the problem has been a lack of leadership, and because of Comanche Chairman stepping down, and then the Creek Chairman stepping down, and they were the leaders, and so there was no impetus as far as getting anything done. And, you know, I kept asking the remaining leader to, you know, we need to meet, we need to meet, because all of these negotiations are coming up with the state, on the compacts and things, and still the Shawnee issue is still a big issue, and there are other issues coming up, and so I think it's important, have they dropped the ball? Yes, they've dropped the ball, but I think it's an important organization, because it's the only one that gives, to me, Oklahoma information that is vital to Oklahoma Indian tribes on the issues that the tribes are doing.
Well, I don't see anybody going up to the state legislature and advocating on behalf of the Oklahoma tribes against Fallon and the education dollars. I mean, what, really, I mean, if Unicott is going to be a strong force in the state of Oklahoma, they need to be sitting at that door of the Oklahoma State Legislature advocating on behalf of the Oklahoma tribes. And I don't mind giving money, like, to MCAI that I know takes things forward on the congressional level, and advocates for Indian tribes, but I just have not, I'm not against it, don't get me wrong, I just want, if we're going to spend money, I want something in return for the money that we're going to spend, that's all.
But what's important to it, too, and I agree with her, because there's been a lack of push on anything. However, they say if you're not on the, at the table, you're on the menu, and I think that's, it's important that we as Pawnee Nation be engaged tomorrow is elections. So new leadership, need to put some good people in there, and see if we can get something done, you know, because all these, all these things, I agree with you.
Okay.
I agree with you. So what I'm asking is, can I go tomorrow?
I guess it depends on who you're going to, or how to put on there, I guess.
Who's running, or is it just, you just elect amongst who's there?
Probably.
And do y'all usually have a good turnout?
Well, we used to, you know, but, you know, and Chairman Coffey was on, and George Tiger was on, and then Mark O'Prey was on.
Who, who is, who called for this meeting?
Well, George Tiger called for the meeting. And see, he's not an elected tribal leader.
Right.
And so he'll be getting on.
Okay.
So. But I agree, they need to do more. Yeah, we need, we need to open up to go or not tomorrow.
Are we looking to amend the motion and second, or just do approval on that one?
Just this one.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve it. Because it is a very important organization, yes, and it's been the history of it, to, to start to get powerful, and then the leadership, there's a problem with it. So if it could just be sustained, it would be really, it would be really good for the Oklahoma, Kansas, and Texas tribes.
It's in Stroud.
I'll second that, and I just want to say the same thing, that, you know, since I got on the council, seeing that, you know, that at one point they were very active, and to now, I mean, I think it's, I don't know, it just kind of got quiet, and I don't know what else has been going on, you know, but, you know, maybe while you're going down there, you can tell us, you know, what is going on, and maybe they'll be more active, because I agree with what Angela's saying, is that, you know, we need to have people, representation, you know, for all of us up there, you know. I mean, I'd go up there, but we'll probably all be in the mess, you know, if I go up there.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those agrees, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? All right, I will go to Stroud tomorrow. Andrew?
Okay.
You're blinding me.
Good evening, council, I'd be more than willing to go to the state council.
We all heard him now.
Hello, well, there we go. It's on record.
We've had a pretty good couple of weeks here at Pawnee Nation, from my perspective. You know, it started off with that outstanding job that Reva did, the outstanding grant, she got another outstanding score, it was ninety-six. Last year was ninety-seven, so she's a little disappointed herself, that's why I gave her day off anyway. We also found out that we were awarded the MSPI grant, which has been a big and outstanding thing for us.
All right.
Seven years.
And that's the one I was worried.
Four years, so that's, that's an outstanding job at DHCS, and their days off are coming shortly. You know, we, we just continue to have excellent work being done on behalf of our employees and staff, who are being assisted to self-beneficial positions over the body of ourselves, and I think we have an outstanding team, and, you know, there's not much I can do, but I give them day off for successful grant applications, I'd say, because I know all the work that the staff gets in, to get those accomplished, there's their time to spend, and it's not just the staff that writes it, you know, we collaborate across the board between finance grants and contracts and planning, so it's a team effort. I had some really good conversations with Mr. Campbell Burris about the bison initiative that we had started. We got a letter sent off to the Theodore Wiserell National Park that solicited for bison during this year's fall. I think, you know, Mr. Burris has some really, some really good plans, he's, you know, pushing forward, right now it's only us in the office, no, us and the Oklahos, but that's okay, we'll work until we got, I'm going to continue with our plan to get our land back, to be able to sustain the bison, the bison, small bison are here, so we've already got the property in the DCS, DNRs, to start the control burn here. I'll lay, once every, all the foliage from the trees drops to ground, and brown, go ahead to our first control burn. So I'm really excited about that, I'm really excited about the bison coming back to be in the seventies of our cultural heritage tradition, and absent for far too long, we're not looking forward, it's just, I'm excited to know that. We are still continuing to feel the effects of the earthquakes, I don't know if anybody checks the stats, but we've had thirty-three earthquakes in the past seven days, we have two today, they were early this morning, and they were in two-point-eight and two-point-five degrees. USGS is still getting us data, they're still keeping us in the loop, which is a good thing. Still worried about another earthquake here in Pawnee equal in magnitude, so for that end, we have completed our earthquake, earthquake training, and earthquake preparedness classes, emergency management services manager lead, and we're going to continue to hit that from here on out, it's going to be part of our training from here on out. And we're going to start getting with properties, and figure out ways to better repair our office spaces, our workspaces for earthquake preparedness, you know, strapping down harsh cats and potash and stuff, so looking really heavy things from the top shelf back to the bottom, little thing. It's got to be the challenge of employees and staff to change their mindset when it comes to earthquakes, or being an opportunity to be serious. I think that the last earthquake that we had, the main common point, the situation point, about the earthquakes are something that you need to take seriously. With that, we're continuing our conversations with Hurt Justice, and all of them, we started conversations with a new set of funds that went on far enough along yet to publicly state their needs, but I think that we're coming closer to the time, or, you know, we have to take more serious actions, and let our local market know, and community companies know, and save Oklahoma know, that we've had enough of it here in Pawnee, Oklahoma, and they need to change their ways, so to speak. So our earthquake response continues. Jeff Underwood from Senator Luntford's staff, came and visited us again today, continues to be surprised by Senator Luntford's support, he's a good man, just came through with everything that he said he would come through with us, and so we're keeping Mr. Underwood and Senator Luntford in the loop about all of that activities. We continue to meet with the mayor, Pawnee, portating our efforts to make a plan with our FEMA, but we're still waiting on a lot of information, we're waiting on our insurance adjuster, and our contractor manager, our construction manager, to settle on a price tag for the cost of returning our buildings, so there's some stuff to do. We've moved some folks, we're probably going to continue to look for ways to move folks, especially enrollment is going to be next, the building one has been seriously damaged, and so I just need to find a place to move them. I think we've decided on moving them to, in the interim, to ICW offices now, because ICW is moving next week to the Pawnee Nation Resource Center, which is another great outstanding thing that I forgot to mention, we have a great opening in the Resource Center. Reva, again, an outstanding job, probably even a whole other, which means another day. We, um, on just the bureaucratic side, I finalized the travel policy that I will present to the council. We've made quite a few changes, especially with documentation, but we made our travel policy more in line with the reality of travel, using the GSA as a bottleneck as our footprint, because, you know, the GSA, GSA has something that we find contradictory with our policies sometimes, so basically, our travel policy is going to be a little bit more stringent than what the GSA allows, just because of what we have experienced here with the nation. So that's, that's done. I'm finalizing the oil and gas statute to put another regulatory arm of the government in action here. I realized early on that it'd be difficult to propagate rules and regulations for tax, taro, and DCS. I don't have the time to write them, developing rules and regulations, and so I've come up with a way of just writing an oil and gas statute, this is just the plan I'm presenting, you know, it's either a good plan or it's not. But I'm writing, finalizing an oil and gas statute that's related to the responsibility of all those three agencies under one statute, so I don't have to write individual regulations for each, each branch. Also strengthening our separate taxing, things like that. I want to incorporate also the waste water objection, and do all those kinds of things, which I have done, and the oil and gas statute's just not been, it's not quite finished yet, draft phase to present to council. I'm continuing to explore the possibility of taking over the Pawnee Nation's assuming responsibility for the lease process of our landlands here in the nation, so I've gathered all the information I think I need to have, and now it's just a matter of getting the proposal to you all. Sustainability is going to be the key, I'm not going to assume any kind of irresponsibility about us being able to sustain that long-term. Inner Travel Fund Day is going on at the Colonnation, I think that's October seventh, and then we're going to do an Employee Fund Day, we were supposed to have it the week of the earthquake, but because of the earthquake, we pushed it off, so we're going to have it on the tenth of October, which is on this day, so it just didn't bode, and on this day, we're going to have Employee Fund Day. And, you know, other than that, you know, it's just been kind of business as usual, busy, and trying to still identify things that need to be tweaked and fixed, and tweak them and fix them. But I'm really, really proud of our staff. One thing about the earthquakes that really helped us out is we are, you know, we have seen what works and what doesn't work. Turk, Turk was outstanding, by the way, that, that whole plan that was implemented was just an outstanding plan. Now we just need to tweak it specifically for the very, very, very decisive, because they are a much greater threat than they were when the Turk panel stood up, and so that's all we're doing, as far as the administration of Turk, and how it's supposed to function when it's activated, it just flopped. And that's, you know, partly due to great policy, but it's mostly due to great staff, employees that do what they have to do, like, so. That's why we're, oh, tribalinitiative.com, sorry, I almost dropped that, Angela. Tribalinitiative.com is a consulting group, from what I can find on the internet, watching their videos, their YouTube videos, they have, they have a homepage, web page. They don't give out too much of their business model, they don't give out too much of what exactly they do, but they are a consulting, consulting firm that hooks you up with experts in certain fields, whether they be financial, or medical, or insurance, or education, and they help you develop plans to kind of, how we internally administer these things without, you know, cutting out the federal bureaucracy and cutting out anything else, using our own funds, our own resources to invest wisely, to spend wisely, to create business plans wisely. So it may be something worth continuing to explore. Again, a lot of it is behind a paywall that I can't get, get to, so what I am going to do is, and I haven't had a chance to do it yet, is to reach out to just some other folks that I may know, that maybe they might use our services, or know more about it, but it seems to me that, you know, the founder has his, he's a very successful business guy, he's got his hands in investment facilities, in financial markets, so they have BFI Trust, they have the Freedom Equity Group, I think there's some kind of health initiative, or INB Consult, or INB Online, or whatever. And again, their personnel are running gamut, or their expert advisors run gamut, from insurance to trust accounts, to equity, to business, healthcare, and education, so that's what I got from them, that's the research that I could find, and a lot of it is gone in paywall, and, you know, I did subscribe to the newsletter, I did get something in the mail yesterday, but, you know, just to maybe see if they push out that information, but they kind of don't, they kind of play it close to the vest. But they're a native-owned company, they're taro certified, they have a taro certified guy that hooked the nation up with taro certified businesses, A.D. businesses, so it's a, it seems to be like an all-in-one consulting, all-in-one stock for consulting for Native American governments, so that's what, that's what that is. And also, Army Corps of Engineers.
Why?
Important. Very, very, very important. They have been the last federal agency to really take seriously the consulting part of Section 106 of the UVA. For some reason, they have, it's part of their regulations, and, you know, they have, they have a lot of exclusions. However, they are, and not all of them, I mean, the Army Corps, just like any other federal agencies, depending on what region you're in, the Shippuden, who's leading, the charge in that region, so it's going to have differences there, but overall, they are lagging way behind, even the GLR, the BI, when it comes to consulting with their drugs, and their projects do. And their projects do, the projects that the Army Corps handles are huge projects. We're not talking about building a cell tower or permitting a small wet pad. They're doing massive infrastructure development, whether it be waterways, canals, bridges, anything associated with water should be the ones that they're going to be the agency to lead. And so it's very important, and I will agree with the council that John Michael, the TPO officer, definitely needs to be in attendance. It's been a hot topic issue for TPO for a long time. Part of my leadership, that position, that was one of the main topics of discussion that every TPO had with every other TPO was what are we going to do with our corporate resources? I mean, proceedings to go to access pipeline. So in the stories that other TPOs have about the treatment of their officers of their tribes by the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, to make the blood boil. So it's really important that we stand up and make our voices heard, this agency in particular. So that's just my... Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Andrew, you mentioned that you're writing oil and gas statute, writing an oil and gas statute that will incorporate three agencies.
Yes.
What were those three?
Those are going to be tax, Department of Environmental, Conservation Safety, and taro. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm not looking at you. The sun's right in mine.
No, that's fine.
I can't see. Who, you mentioned that ICW was moving into the Resource Center. Who else is moving and how is ICW going to pay space costs?
Taro is moving into the Resource Center. The story that the space cost is going to be biggie dubbed by taro, or it's going to be shouldering the taro. That was the plan going into the construction phase of that building was having taro and ICW in that building. Taro shouldering the all of the space cost.
But I thought there was some issues with taro workers and ICW children.
That was a misunderstanding point because at the time, we just received the SORNA certification. The SORNA has certain requirements. However, after further investigation about everything, it's not an issue whatsoever. There's enough divide between the two. The fact that the workers are there, if they're there on business, it's okay. They're separated from ICW, which is all locked up. Everything is going to be locked on ICW anyway. So there was really not a legal reason. At first, we were concerned moving taro out because of, it may be a legal obstacle that we could overcome, but there is, it's not going to, if it's SORNA or the application is SORNA in any way whatsoever.
Okay, well, I know that any, anybody with a background, if they're having, if they're hosting supervised visits and the children are there and you have workers, I know they deal with workers who may not be able to get into the workforce because of backgrounds and things like that, we've got to be careful.
Yes.
Because the main thing is safety first.
Yes.
And that could violate our VIA contract.
And it doesn't. We wanted that as well, except for the other concern that was raised. The safety protocols that we put in place at the ICW building is going to be locked up, so access is going to be restricted. And the way that taro operates is, most of the guys that come to see them, they're escorted to the office, the guys that they want to see and so on. You know, if it really, really becomes an issue, I mean, that's something that we address. But paper, the original plan, the way that we submit to ICW G in the first place seems to be a decent plan. The fact that ICW is only, is basically a separate part of the building, that's why we completely locked up the video surveillance of taro. And the possibilities of the lockup and the center and everything else, we don't foresee any real conflict. Yes, ma'am.
Angela, I had that concern, and I talked to the division director about it, and she said that they don't schedule the visits there at the building. They try to go to parks or somewhere where it's not so institutional. And so she says that most of those visits should not be, or the visits should not be occurring there in the building.
Okay. And I agree, but then you get into the winter months, you know, and where are we going to go with that? And then the other issue is the space cost. So ICW will be able to pay their portion of it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Concerning, you know, the earthquakes and stuff, so I'm assuming that maybe some safety checklist is done for the elders?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have some kind of a protocol in case another one happens that we're able to check on these guys?
Yes.
Is it all right or something to reassure them?
Yes, like I said, I counselled about spot ownership. That is one of the things that we are updating our policy about because there wasn't no really kind of step or procedure wise to reach out to our tribal elders. And, you know, we just made the decision on the fly that they, to get them to start the phone tree, to get contact with the elders. And so we're going to make that a part of our policy in Turk's, Turk's, and now as well established, this is the step that we take is, you know, as everybody starts showing up in space to do their third responsibility to know that the phone tree is going to keep off on the other side, you know, your child or your tribal elders. Especially we were concerned with elders, a lot of them.
Yeah, definitely. You know, some of these elders have homes that are really not in the best of shape, you know, so I'm worried about them.
I will say this, we got some data today that was pretty shocking. We were looking at how much wastewater has been injected in the state of Oklahoma in 2015 and the first two quarters of 2016. There was 264 million barrels of wastewater injected in the state of Oklahoma in 2015 and the first two quarters of this year, which there's, that's the only data we have right now, which equals 11 billion, 88 gallons, or 88 million gallons of brining wastewater in six quarters of operation. So it's very substantial. With the data on what we're importing, it's about 1%, but again, from what we were told, the OCC has a hard time tracking all that because trucks just come in and come out. I don't know for sure. Within our district, we've had 7.8 million gallons or 7.8 million barrels of wastewater injected into our district in the same concrete, 2.1 million barrels injected just in these past two quarters. So activity is starting to pick up, and a lot of that has to do with the activity that is going to be happening. So it's, the more you dive into the ecological consequences of this type of activity, the more, you know, you realize that it's time to make a statement, it's time to stand up because it's out of control. Anything else?
May I ask, what is the PDA responsible for presenting responsibility for monitoring and making sure that, I'm forgetting us in this situation.
The answer to that question is yes and no. They have the most responsibility to be, I don't think that's the element, the one that's created by this production or injection under the processes. The EPA is supposed to be the one regulating the injection, but as we found out, that's not on the case. And we have 172 underground injection control wells within our tribal jurisdiction in our Pawnee. And only five of them are permitted by EPA, the rest are OCC. So we have quite a bit of underground injection control over there. So we don't have that big of an area, and 172.
It seems like somebody should be asking about the law.
And that's the point of our discussions with the VIA and the OCC. I would recommend that we do another town hall. It would be nice to talk to our tribal members about the earthquakes and the earthquakes and how we perceive it going forward. And so I'm assuming, I was wanting to do that last week, but I got hung up on other stuff. So it'd just be a good idea to, you know, sit down. There's an expert on monitoring techniques, which is fracking and underground injection control, that has offered to give a presentation to tribal members, which I think might be good as well. So anyway, that's my question. Anything else?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, councilman.
Our attorney general has asked to be excused due to a illness in his home. So we will move down to old business item number nine, starting with number one, approval of resolution 1629 museum bylaws. Is that, is that you, Andrew?
Museum bylaws?
Yes, yes, sir.
Sure.
Okay.
Talking about that, sorry. Out comes first.
That was the way.
Is he allowed to speak?
Any questions on the meeting?
Did they change from five to seven? Number four.
That's what's on the agenda, right? Seven resolutions?
Well, the one, I was just going to tell the...
Yes, yes.
It still has five on there.
It wasn't added to that other?
Well, on the one in my packet, it said five.
Oh.
That's what I'm asking. It was changed to seven?
It is changed to seven.
Okay.
Okay. Then that leads to my question or comment on it on 4.10. It talks about a quorum of three. So that would change the quorum to either...
No.
No?
Still, we still want a form of three.
Wouldn't it be four?
It should be four, but we were going by history, and history, we haven't yet be able to get a quorum with, when we had a quorum of four, and all it took was two to make the quorum. And so we wanted to make a quorum of three. We're just increasing the numbers and, you know. And there's other, there's other ways to, is that not, is that what we wanted?
I think we need to look at the appointments of people that are going to be there to serve and that the majority needs to be a simple majority.
Yes.
In my opinion, I think that's just too much power to have for just a few...
Yes.
Board members.
I agree.
I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but I, you know, maybe some other people might get in there with some different ulterior motives and then...
It's okay. I'll go with the other counsel to put the name.
So what simple majority, be four?
It'd be four.
Four, okay. Just one more.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not...
Can I make the motion?
Motion is made to accept the resolution 1629 museum bylaws and seconded by Adrian. Any more discussion?
With changes.
With changes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, with changes.
I'm sorry, with changes.
Call for the vote. Yes.
Famy Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
Adrian Spottershe?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Resolution 1629 passes. Hey!
It's only been four years!
It's been four years.
Four years.
Been on there ever since I've been here. And now we will deal with item number two, three, four, five, and six, the first five here on the Pawnee Nation Museum Board. And we have, we have actually seven folks to put on, and we have seven applicants, correct?
Yes.
And so what we could do is just entertain a motion to, let's just go down through names. Yeah. Cindy's looking at me.
Do you want the resolution?
Okay, there's no skip through, but let's go. Okay. So who's the first name? You gave me the list, didn't you? Okay. The first, the first name is Tommy Evans, Tom Evans. So, okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion. We approve Tom Evans for 1685, resolution 1685.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Daryl?
Yes.
Famy, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
Adrian Spottershe?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
All right.
Donna?
You seconded, right?
Yes.
Move to item number three, approval of resolution 1686, and we have Matt Reed.
Make a motion. We approve Matt Reed for resolution 1686.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second.
Leanna.
Call for the vote.
Daryl?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Famy, yes. Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottershe?
Yes.
All right. Resolution 1686 passes. We have a resolution 1687, and we have Gwen Shanatona.
Make a motion to approve Gwen Shanatona for resolution 1687.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Daryl Watson?
Yes.
Famy Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottershe?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
Resolution 1687 passes. Resolution 1688, and we have Megan Rice.
Make a motion. We approve Megan Rice for resolution 1688.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
Who seconded?
Donna.
Donna.
Bruce, maybe you could say it was motion by Adrian and seconded by Donna.
Okay.
Because I'm writing, I can't read lips. I'm looking at what I'm writing.
Okay.
Daryl Watson?
Yes.
Famy Littleson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottershe?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
All right, six, resolution 1688 passes. We move down to resolution 1689, and we have Pat C. Cooper.
I'll make a motion to approve Pat C. Cooper for resolution 1689.
I'll make a motion to approve Pat C. Cooper for resolution sixteen eighty-nine.
Adrian makes the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Leanna seconds. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
Okay, so resolution sixteen eighty-nine passes. We will move down to item number seven, this is approval of resolution sixteen eighty-one. And the recommendation is to keep this, um, on, um, table?
On what, which one?
On the Supreme Court justice because of the.
Can we have an update on that? What's the status? I knew that they moved it back to Pawnee, but when is the date, this Monday?
Yeah, let's go.
Okay, yeah, I make a motion to table.
Resolution sixteen eighty-one.
Yes.
Motion is made to table resolution sixteen eighty-one, is there a second?
I'll second.
Donna seconds. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
All right, resolution sixteen eighty-one is tabled. We move to new business. And we will continue in new business with the, uh, appointment of, uh, Pawnee Nation Museum Board members. And so with the item number one in new business, we have Ron Rice Senior for resolution sixteen ninety-seven.
Make a motion to approve Ron Rice Senior for resolution sixteen ninety-seven.
I second.
Adrian makes the motion, and Donna, uh, seconds. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
All right, resolution sixteen ninety-seven passes. Move to item number two, which is approval of resolution sixteen ninety-eight. And this will be for Waltina Lawrence.
I'll make the motion to approve Waltina Lawrence for resolution sixteen ninety-eight.
I second.
Motion by Adrian and seconded by Donna. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
I second.
So resolution sixteen ninety-eight passes for Waltina Lawrence. We will move down to item number three, item A, Budget Committee Recommendations. Item A is approval of food distribution federal budget modification number one.
Um, I was just emailing, I don't know if this was an oversight, but the J O M was not added to this agenda under budget recommendations. I, um, so can we add it? Because it was approved at the last budget committee meeting, but we just didn't get it on the agenda by accident.
Okay, so what, we need to, uh.
Add item E, to amend the agenda, to add item E for the J O M request.
So we have A, B, C, D, and E?
Yes.
And that's J O M?
Yes.
Do you make that motion?
I make that motion.
We have a motion to add to new business under number three, item E, J O M.
Your motion is to amend the agenda?
Yes.
To add that, correct?
Yes, to add item E to the agenda.
I'll second.
On number three. Angela makes the motion, and Adrian seconds. All right, call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
Okay, so we have amended the agenda and added item E to number three. And so right now, we are at Budget Committee Recommendation, number A.
Okay, um. Are these all in the packet, Cindy? Okay. Item A is a food distribution federal budget mod number one. They received, um, I believe this is for the generator, right? The amount?
Yes.
Okay. They received twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars additional funds from USDA to purchase a generator. There is no match associated with it, so this budget mod is just allocating those dollars for the expenditure that's on the agenda. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, so Angela makes the motion, is there a second?
I second.
Faimy seconds. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
All right, so that, but, lick my lips. A, uh, number three, number A, food distribution federal budget modification number one passes. It is passed.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the Pawnee Pride Budget Mod number one. And they received, uh, this is adding their carryover dollars. Uh, thank you. Adding their carryover dollars from year one into their current operating budget of ninety-one thousand six hundred fifty dollars. So, um, this is just adding their carryover money, so they expend it in this, to this budget year. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Angela makes the motion, and seconded by Adrian. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
All right, item number B, the Pawnee Pride Budget Modification passes. We move to item number C.
Is the approval of the expenditure of over five thousand dollars to purchase the food distribution generator in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Angela, seconded by Adrian. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
Yes.
Okay, item number C is passed. Move down to item number D.
This is to approve the A and E contract for the ICBG project. I make the, I make the motion to approve this contract and expenditures related.
What, what is the A and E?
Architectural.
Engineering.
Engineering.
Okay.
Motion is made by Angela.
This is for the Aquatic Center.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote. Oh, discussion, okay.
Has this been, uh, reviewed by the Attorney General? Okay.
All right, call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Leanna Keeter?
She left.
She left, oh, she had to, um, oh, she's being excused to leave.
Oh, never mind.
She has left the building.
The next.
So that, that, uh, item number D passes. We move to item number E.
This is a J O M committee request, uh, in the amount of three hundred dollars to assist them with an event, October events, um, related to, uh, they're gonna provide food, and it's kinda like a networking activity to, um, try to pull everybody together. Cindy, can you help me out on this one? On the J O M request, I don't have. I think I just had a, a document in my box, did, did you send it out to us?
Yeah, that's what we wanted to do, they were wanting to have a dinner, and the money was to be used to provide, uh, funds for dinner and a get-together to be able to showcase the, to the community what the J O M does and what they will provide to the students.
Okay. It's, uh, the request says, provide education and awareness of four-seven-seven comprehensive program and services. Um, meet the new youth services coordinator and gather information regarding needs of students and what obstacles, barriers they have regarding their academic endeavors. Funding to be utilized to sponsor the meeting, provide supper, um, the event to take place in October. I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, Donna makes the motion.
Second.
Angela seconds. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
And this will come out of the council's supply line item.
Item number E passes. We mo, we move down in new business to item number four, appro, approval of resolution sixteen ninety-nine, selection method and criteria policy revision. Oh, Matt?
Good evening, Matt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
He's in the army, can't figure out. Okay, the first, uh, policies on the selection method and criteria, uh, several changes to this, um, first part of it is, um, on interviews, we use a scoring tool mechanism, uh, just asking that that scoring tool mechanism, uh, be turned in to the HR department to include the interview, that's just to help, uh, speed up the process, um, and get it back to HR. Um, in the procedure aspect of it, uh, item number three, the change is something that we've already been practicing for several years in regards to the recognition, recog, recognizing preferences, um, giving, um, preference points during the initial screening pro, process, uh, counting points for eight points, Indian preference for five points, veterans preference for five points. The next change is the coordination of the interviews. Uh, once HR gets the information, ranks them and scores them, uh, from there, the hiring authority will get back to HR within three business days, um, in order to schedule the interviews. Same thing, this just goes in line with speeding up the process in order to get applicants hired on, uh, quicker. Um, item number five that is changing is taking the PBC out of the selection process for the division directors. PBC would have the responsibility of interviewing and selecting the executive director and the Attorney General. However, the division directors, everybody below that will be, um, at the hiring authority's discretion, the executive director out down. Um, then the final change is after, uh, interviews are completed and scoring and ranking's been done, um, the hiring authority will forward the information to the HR department three business days following the receipt of the interview. And, uh, the whole purpose of these dates and limiting them is once position closed to get the position filled, and we don't lose anybody from looking elsewhere or keeping them in limbo and waiting, getting them outboard as soon as possible.
This is off the subject, but did you get the change on the website on any future positions to say driver's license and state, or state ID?
Those are done on an individual basis, we'll post those, so as we post them up in the future, we will make that change.
Okay, so, uh, if it's not required, then you'll have this more state ID?
Yes.
Okay. I make, I make a motion to approve.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Adrian seconds. Call for the vote.
Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, no. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
So resolution sixteen ninety-nine passes. We move down to item number five, approval of resolution sixteen one hundred, general leave policy revision.
Before you go, I wanted to make a note of error on the resolution, it should read one hundred, mine reads one oh one. It's, is that right? Okay.
Was it one oh one or one hundred?
One hundred.
Okay, not the, uh, general leave policy, they're just adding clarity, uh, authorizing leave of absence for any regular full-time employee who also serves on a commission, uh, requiring, allowing that as an authorized leave, however, it must be in the status of leave without pay. A group past time or paid time off will attending events directly related to the commission. And then previously addressed, so, um, questions come up recently, so this is just now putting in a policy.
If we can entertain a motion?
Is that the only change on this one?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Uh, Donna seconds.
You didn't ask discussion last one. Other discussion.
Discussion, did you say?
Call for the vote.
Did you say discussion?
I said she, he didn't ask for discussion on the last one.
Oh, okay. Um, I would just like to say, though, the commissions are paid stipends, that's why I'm for this, otherwise it's double dipping.
Yes.
All right, call for the vote.
I had a hard time finding my office. I'm sorry, guys, um, you're just gonna have to wait, um. Okay, the mushroom was special?
Me, Angela.
Angela.
Seconded by Donna. Right, general leave policy?
Yes.
Okay, Daryl Walton?
Yes.
Faimy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottersheep?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen one hundred passes. Move on down to number six, approval of resolution sixteen one oh one, administrative leave policy revision.
The only change to this is authorizing the administrative leave, uh, for those who are summoned to court for jury duty. Nothing's been mentioned previously, uh, this question has come up, so this is just a policy, authorized admin leave while under.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Don't they get paid for that?
Very little, nowhere near salary, it's usually under twenty-one. Very little. Nowhere near salary. It's usually under $20 a day during duty.
Oh, it wouldn't be double dipping that much?
Wouldn't say, but not enough probably for lunch.
They don't buy lunch?
No.
Nope.
Better than being a hunter. I don't know. I've never been called to jury duty, so how to ask?
Yes. Call for the vote.
Just a minute. The motion!
Oh, okay, okay. Angela made the motion. Adrian second, sorry.
Okay, Darrell Watson?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spotters?
Yes.
Resolution 16101 passes. I just make a note that in my entire lifetime of living here in Pawnee, I've never been called to jury duty. But the six years I was ca, uh, living in Florida, I was called about 10 times. Looks like every other month I was going to the court.
Now, next month, you're gonna be called.
I shouldn't have said anything. All right, okay. All right, we'll move to item number seven, resolution 16102, performance evaluations policy revision.
And the change of, uh, this policy is during the introductory period, which is for 90 days of employment. Require the supervisor to conduct a performance evaluation every 30 days and then re-need supervisor. And then at the end of the 30-day recommending or declining for visionary employees from incoming and reigning employees. The change associated with this is, uh, I think it's good positive leadership to be on a monthly basis during the first 90 days, propose to one time again. Also, we have recently had some issues come up where at the end of 90 days, a supervisor has elected not to want to maintain somebody, but they had an address issue or hasn't been documented. Basically forces the hands of supervisor to be able to give that feedback continually throughout the 90-day period. If we're seeing issues throughout, they're addressing the 30-day mark, the 60-day. Should come to 90 days, no surprise. So that's just the purpose of this change.
And are you gonna monitor that?
Yes, we track all evaluations from intro to annual evaluations. And we do send out monthly reminders for each one.
So it's gonna be called a what?
Introductory evaluation.
Three introductory evaluations?
Three performance evaluations.
But it's for introductory employees, right?
Correct.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Angela makes the motion, second.
What happens if they, can I have a question?
Uh, let's sue the motion and the second, then we'll have discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I meant to, uh, second it, so.
Yeah, so Adrian makes the second, so then we have discussion.
Wait, let me re-. Okay, so, um, we're gonna do a, a 30-day performance evaluation on new incoming employees.
Yes.
30 days for three months. I had a question.
You mentioned three times.
Yeah. So every 30 days, the new employee is gonna have an evaluation?
Just for the introductory period, just for the 90 days.
Okay.
It's very short.
And then you're keeping, oh, I was gonna ask, what happens if the, if it doesn't get done?
Uh, there's actually a mark in here. Um, see, if it's not done, that the supervisor can be disappointed.
So there's some, well, that, that was...
Item number eight.
I guess that was my thing is that, you know, there's some departments that are real busy and, I don't know, you have to sit down and evaluate somebody every month?
The, uh, initial performance evaluation is only a page and a half. It's actually, I mean, it's not timing, not very lengthy to be able to accomplish. Uh, so, I mean, in my thoughts, it's worth continual feedback, which should be required anyway. The performance is just documentation of that, so it shouldn't be long drawn out performance evaluations. Basically, you have check mark from one through five, rate of the score. So, time-wise, it shouldn't be that time-consuming for supervisor.
I think that's crazy. I thought we were trying to get people to come work here. I don't know, I just see it as being too much.
They won't know that till their introductory period. YouTube edited.
I don't know. YouTube is, is recording it right now, so. Now you know if you come work for Pawnee, you're gonna get put through the mail the first 90 days, if you could take it.
I like it.
And I don't, I don't look at it as a negative. I look at it as a, a, a time to meet with, to get to know that employee in that first 90 days, um, and, and able to address any issues or shortcomings, weaknesses, or address any strengths. You're doing a great job. Give that reinforcement back. It don't have to be a disciplinary part. It could be a, uh, encouraging, you know, you're doing a great job. I like what you're doing.
I agree.
You know, within, and, and encouragement.
No, but you can do that without doing the evaluate. I'm sorry, but, excuse me, you could ask anybody, "Well, what do you think, come in here, I'm gonna evaluate you." "Oh, I thought I was here for 90 days." "Oh, well, I gotta do this every 30 days." And, uh, to me, it's intimidating. I'm, uh, that's just my opinion of it. I don't know everybody else. Why can't you just be positive and do a positive reinforcement just on your daily basis or weekly basis? Or, it should be that way anyway.
Well, I think that what you're, you know, um, proposing is just about the same thing as what she's talking about myself, you know? Pull somebody in, "I think you're doing a great job," you know, start checking off your boxes. That's just me, though. I like it.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I will tell you, I know someone that is a hard worker and didn't get evaluated by his supervisor. And because of that, he didn't get an increase at the end of 90 days. I know when our, uh, Mason came in here, uh, our attorney, he, he, after 90 days, man, he's got his, he got his evaluation. He got his increase with this Pawnee tribal member that I know is doing an excellent job. Thanks, it's not at you. I'm just, I'm upset because I didn't want to break the set. But this young man that I know is a very hard worker, very good for the tribe, has a heart for the people, didn't get his evaluation, and he didn't get his increase. And I don't know if he's got it to this day. And it's a wonder that he's, I'm thankful that he's still here with us. That's why it's important. I'm glad to see this come up. I didn't know this was on the agenda. But I'm, I'm glad it did because I, I, I heard about this.
I, I can say right now, throughout all our employees, we don't have one who's targeting their initial evaluation right now. Hasn't been for the last two months. Prior to two months, everybody is.
Well, I'm sure if he got it, though, it's been retroactive, right? If he got a positive.
Right, but always, I mean, salary increases are not automatic at the end of the 90-day period. That's all based on budgets and, you know.
It was budgeted. I'll tell you, it was budgeted.
So then, what you're saying is this is gonna improve?
Yes.
So you could cut somebody loose in 30 days instead of keeping them for 90, right? By evaluation, right? Well, I mean, you can let anybody go at any time in 90 days, right?
Right, right. It doesn't require an evaluation to, you know, separate somebody from there.
Okay.
I think that opens up feedback discussion.
That's all my, my questions.
Okay, call for the vote.
Uh, Darrell Watson?
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Adrian Spotters?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, no.
All right, resolution 1602 passes. Move to item number eight, approval of resolution 16103, grievance procedure steps policy revision.
Okay, there are several changes, uh, throughout this grievance procedure. Um, all of them basically revolve around shortening the timeframe right now from day one when a grievance is filed with all the five-day, uh, grace periods in between. It takes roughly about six weeks to complete a grievance from start to finish. And reducing all of these, um, date requirements to three business days, um, that will shorten it, and I think that's fair to the employees who file grievance to be able to get a timely response to what their issue is.
But the only, um, change that wasn't made to the five days was the initial, giving the employee five days. That stays in intact, and then everything else is three days. What, what was the decision behind five to three days? I mean...
Just based on the length of a speedy response, taking six weeks in order to complete it, uh, you know, I, I know we wanna give due process, but also with employees sitting waiting or a decision to go through the steps of six weeks, I think that's entirely too long. So, we're hoping this should shorten that, um, to three to four weeks, you know, three days back and forth between all the responses, uh, decisions.
On step two, one, so you're not giving them a timeframe? They just have to do it the next business day? Is that the way, am I reading that right? The employee shall present an appeal to the division director through HR director the following business day?
Right, the appeal is only in a, "I agree" or "I decline" offer, wishing moving forward. Once they file their initial grievance from theirs, uh, thereof, it's up to the employee to read, review, and make that decision. Like, "I accept and stop," or "I decline and appeal to the next step."
Okay, so that's gonna be a training piece for our staff, so they'll know? Because when I think of an appeal, I think I've gotta write this whole brief out to, 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 but they don't, but that's what most people will think. So I'm, I'm hoping that they'll be training.
When, when anybody files a grievance, and we've had several, the very first day, the very first step of it is actually print off, give them the policy, and go over the policy with them to ensure that they're aware of it, and they give them a copy as well.
Good.
We have not had any of that, this is the deadline, due to turn it in, and pretty well, I'm talking to everybody throughout the process. You know, all have agreed that this is too lengthy, this is too long to get the decision, so it's pretty consistent that wanting to speed up the process.
Okay, we can entertain a motion.
Can you give me a minute? I'm still reading through the changes. I've... So step three, one is still the same, "I disagree" or yes or no? Basically, it's not anything that they have to put up?
Right.
Okay. There's one other change in there on, uh, step two, number three, about the, um, having a, um, alternate, uh, division director in case the, um, grievance is filed against that one, right? Oh, why don't, why are we giving it to an alternate division director? Why not HR just handle it?
Because you, you want it, you want it to be at the level that the policy lies for. So, if, if you have an employee that grieves against a division director, and they're grieving because the division director didn't handle the situation that they wanted to, it makes sense to have a division, another division director alternate read the facts of the, of the case, or the appeal or the issues as a division director. Because a division director knows what division directors do. So they know what the leadership, uh, requirements are. They know what, uh, decisions should be made for the policy. We, we've already done it, uh, twice, just once.
Once.
Once. HR is the, the neutral referee.
But then should it not go to you?
No, because the, the grievance is an employee right to grieve against, uh, either another employee, the manager, or the division director. The, it's only fair and equitable that the division director who has a grievance filed against them has the grievance go to their peer, if they are the one that has a grievance filed against them.
Do, does the alternate have the option to say, "No, I don't want any part of that"? I mean, okay, so what if you go through the whole process and no other division director wants to do this? Then what happened?
Then that's gone off as the size of the...
There's no privacy things involved, confidentiality issues with somebody else hearing this grievance that's not related?
For grievance hearings, we actually have a confidentiality form in which, um, the grieving party and the person responding signs to the grievance hereby. I think I was taking some, uh, division director out of that chain. Same thing, you'd have them sign that confidentiality form, and strictly to that grievance. Same thing, regardless of how many grievances, division directors such, you know, have done. You know, we've had several, had multiple ones. I mean, same thing, I still, every time, you know, go over the grievance policy and everything with them, even if we're, you know, being repetitive of it, so they're aware of it.
But what about the employee who feels they were aggrieved about, I mean, how are they, is it, is there's no violation of their privacy or confidentiality, um, on their behalf of that employee who feels aggrieved, and then it goes to another division director? That's, we don't know what the circumstances are, and, you know, they hear everything, and they may not want it all spread out to, to, to another division director that's not involved.
An employee, an employee that, that goes through the grievance process that has to adhere to policies and grievance process.
I know.
If they elect to, if they elect to go through this process, then that's what...
I, I understand that, but I am just, I am just thinking specifically, if I approve this policy and I don't take into consideration all aspects of that employee who feels aggrieved, then, I mean, if, if it was me and there was something that, um, only a few knew about it, I wouldn't wanna go to my, my other peer and, and have them air my dirty laundry or air the dirty laundry or whatever it is. Um, I'm just thinking of that individual employee and that, to make sure that they're treated fairly.
The problem is, is when you're trying to write policy, we have to balance, because everybody that's in this situation has rights, including the division director that's being aggrieved against. They have rights as well. And so it's only equitable that a peer who sits in the same level of authority, knows what the policies are, knows the decisions that, that need to be made by a division director, they can fairly assess the decisions and the judgment of their peer. And, and this is just one of those things where we're balancing everybody's right to a fair and equitable process, because a grievance is not just, uh, a right that an employee has to, to get what they want out of their job. A grievance is, is, is really to, to identify real issues, real problems, and come to an agreement or equitable decision in the case. And so in that process, everybody should have, uh, the right to a fair peer, including the people that have the grievance filed against them as well.
Donna?
I'm not asking for any specific information, but, um, is there something driving this?
Yes, there were, uh, some issues in which, um, grievances were written, um, against a division director. So, yes, that's why this is put in here, where we have to have one reassigned, um, as opposed to going directly to that division director.
Seems like, to me, it's, 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 it's the fairest thing to do based on the size of our tribe without taking it outside. And, and, uh, I, I just...
My stance is that we follow the hierarchy of the organizational chart, and that it would go to the executive director, not, not an alternate division director. That's, that's just my stance on it, and I can't support this policy with that in there. I don't think it's fair, um, to the alternate division director or to the employee that feels aggrieved to have. And that's just, that's my opinion. As a supervisor, as a former supervisor, um, I just, I think that the hierarchy should follow.
Can I add one as well? Because we discussed this as well, and one of my concerns was, should the executive director sit into that? director sit in on that? Because remember, the division director grievance processing, there's steps to it. If I sit in the position of an aggrieved division director, my committee, my grievance committee is made up of employees. So if I make a decision, one way or the other, what, because of my position as executive director, what influence does that have on those committees that are made up of employees and staff? Are they necessarily going to, and just from the outside looking in, if you're an employee and you have a grievance against, you know, Brian Kirk, who's the division director, I sit in and I say, you know what, this is, this should go forward, or this should be handled this way. Or let's say I say, no, this is, I agree, everything Brian did was great and, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing here to grieve. So then the employee appeals it, knowing that I as the executive director made a decision contrary to what they want as an employee, and now goes to a grievance committee. An employee is not going to sit in that position and have to pay the grievance committee knowing that, they're going to, they're going to think, the game is rigged because the executive director is driving the decision. Because they don't want, in their mind, they don't want the committee to, or anybody on the committee who's an employee or staff member is going to contradict what the executive director believes. And it can lead to other executive directors dictating what the final outcome is to.
Then, then my question to the council at that time, what's accountability? Where's the accountability in this? You know, if that's the case, if we're worried about future things and who sits in your position later on, and I'm truly aware that that could potentially happen, but then I say that we hold this body accountable to that position. That we've got to take accountability in this government. There's got to be some accountability. And I, and I hear what you're saying, that so it's just another flaw within, I don't know, I mean, I, and I don't, if, I don't know, I mean, I hope that our employees don't feel threatened by you. I think you're a good executive director, I think you're fair, and I hope they realize that too. You know, we've got to rely on that piece of it as well. And I, and I, I don't know. I don't know, but I just, I, for the reasons why, what I stated earlier, I just don't think it's fair. And I do see your point on the other, and, but I hope that who we pick, I guess who picks the grievance committee? Who does that?
Supported by the president.
Yep.
And so, so then there's the accountability. Make sure that your grievance committee is, is, is upstanding, honest individuals who's going to carry out their duties. And if they're not going to do it, hold them accountable.
How can you hold them accountable?
Replace them. Replace them. That's just me, my stance, but we can vote.
I think, I think one of, one of the issues, the biggest issues that we've had is, is we haven't been able to get grievance committees because they, it's just a tough one, it's just one of those tough ones that folks don't, don't want to do that.
Is there other options that we could utilize? Grievance procedures that we could utilize besides a grievance committee? I mean, have we looked at other avenues? If that's not working for us? Yeah, mediation, arbitration, I don't know.
You know, it's tough, just kind of like what Bruce was saying, you know, you have people on the grievance committee, but when it comes to their, and I'm just saying, you know, but when it comes to maybe their friends or something, then they're put in an awkward position, you know, so some people would rather not, not even be involved with that. And it creates hardships for how things, you know, run and stuff, you know, and I see all these, everything I'm hearing, you know, I see it, you know, I'm not saying it's happened or whatever, but I could see it happening, if it hasn't already, you know, but I'm just saying that, you know, I think these are a lot of good things that's being brought out, so.
Yes.
Would the council be more comfortable if we took this back and worked on it more and brought it back? It's a little unusual about the alternating division director. That's an unusual part of it.
Um, I'm not going to support it with that in there. So, I mean, that's just me though, my vote.
Who does it go to?
You.
I would, I would support that kind of policy. I, I just think there's too many risks. I'm supposed to be the ultimate arbiter at my position over everything, and you'll put, you'll put any future executive director in the position of possibly driving decision making at the governing body above them, which is the committee itself, because the committee is the last stop, no matter what. And, and so it needs to be, I am the enforcer of the policy, I am the enforcer of the law, I am not the arbiter for a employee grievance.
Well, I've, I've served as a tribal administrator, which is comparable to an executive director. And I, it's work, I mean, it's, I was never put in that position. I followed the policy, and if they weren't doing their job, I held them accountable. And I hung my hat on that. I hung my hat on that, so.
And we have, I guess we have different views, because I want to hold my division directors accountable. I don't want to hold an employee accountable.
Well, I mean, and then we, so we, if that's the case, we shouldn't have a grievance policy that goes through that, those channels then? If that's what you truly believe, we should not have a grievance policy that goes through that channel that does not follow that hierarchy. We can agree to disagree, Adrian, it's okay.
I just, I just know that these changes were made because of practical, practical issues.
Tiffany.
So I just want to bring up, so what if an employee has an issue, I'll use myself as just a division director, and then they also have issues with HR. Well, per our policy, the executive director has to step in. So if executive director is doing the HR arbitrating and mediation, then who steps in? Who has to respond to that division director response? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Good question!
Because, I mean, that's something that.
That's actually the scenario that brought this about.
Well, if, if, if the grievance was against you and they, then it goes to the next step, and then they have a problem with HR, and so HR has to step back, and then the ED would come in. The ED would come in and make their decision whether it's agree, or whether they say uphold the decision or not. And then if they, if the agreed individual employee disagrees with the executive director at that time, then it goes to the committee. For their decision, and that's final.
Does that policy read that ED steps in?
Yes.
For human resources?
Yes.
It says in the grievance policy, somewhere else in the policy.
It says that you step in for the.
There's a grievance filed against HR.
It just bypasses, it just, if it, if there's agreements against HR, if, that step is overwritten because it's against him, it goes to you, and then you make your decision. If they disagree with it, then they go to the grievance committee.
The policy says that if the grievance is against Matt, then the ED steps in in his position as the referee of the grievance process. So I will be the one to administer, go to the employee, take, accept the grievance, go stand up at committee, go, I mean, my job would be Matt's job, and if the grievance is against him, I'm just turning into what he does, which is guide the employee and the other people involved in the grievance process. That's what the policy states.
Where you, can you, can you point that out to me? Where does it say that?
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head. I believe it's in section A. I'm not sure if anybody has a copy of the policy, because this is actually the steps itself.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't have it in front of me, so.
I think Donna had a good idea. It seems to me that, you know, there's several good points coming out from everybody, and Donna had suggested that perhaps you gave that to me. I would suggest that you do that and look at some best practices for other tribes, see how they operate other organizations, and come back for best practices and see, and try to apply it to the situation here, and bring back a couple of options perhaps. Just a thought, I mean, it seems like you're having a lot of discussion, which is, is good, but I'm not, we're not getting to the vote.
Got hamburger helper waiting at home. But what we, what we have is, is resolution sixteen oh three before us, and so we've had a lot of discussion, so somebody can make a motion one way or the other on sixteen oh three.
I make a motion to send it back to committee.
I'll send it back. Table?
We have a motion and a second to table.
Is that what it is?
Table and send to committee. HR, committee. No.
Call for the vote.
Dara Walcott?
Yes.
Amy Littleson? Yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Adrian Spott, ours chief?
Yes.
Donna here?
Yes.
All right, it's tabled and sent back to committee. So we come to item number nine.
I have something, of course, I want to tell you, I know we haven't talked about it in a while, and it might not be something maybe, I mean, you'll probably have to get some outside help, but we also need a cultural leave policy. You know, so if.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Okay, okay, that's awesome.
I would like to thank Matthew and HR, and I would like to thank the committee for all the hard work that they're doing on getting all these policies updated.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
It might make you frustrated, but I think you're still doing your job, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
All right. Daniel Meyer.
You can introduce yourself. It was kind of between me and him, you asked to be on agenda, he's a rep for this area and he can explain it all to you all. He wanted to just come and he said do a short presentation to us.
All right, hammer grab.
You know, I've been.
I know, I haven't ate.
Hello, everybody. My name's Daniel Meyer, and I started working here about thirteen months ago with the Natural Resources Conservation Service. I have Native American program, last off for Pawnee Nation here, and also District Conservation for Pawnee County Soil Water Conservation District. Also, I want to thank you, everybody here, for letting me get the opportunity here this evening, just to tell you a little bit about the programs here. We have, it's, these programs are basically the twenty fourteen farm bill, and they have a farm bill like every six years. Our agency has started back in the mid thirties. I don't know if you guys ever heard of the Natural Resources Conservation Service, it started as a soil erosion service, a soil conservation service, but it started because it was like, well, it might have been nineteen thirties, I expected it earlier, the resource soda was a drought, and there was a lot of ag culture of annual crops and stuff like that, especially in Kansas and Oklahoma, Texas, stuff, this with the dryness and just add all this, wind blowing, so, dust roll, they call it, that's how our agency started. Well, anyway, it's, it's no longer, not only do we address soil, soil erosion by wind, but also water, but also we address other resource concerns like with wildlife and biopsies and energy and all that. And we address those concerns in these various programs that we have. One of the, one of the two big, one of the greatest, biggest programs we have is called the Conservation Stewardship Program. And that's a program, it's a five, it's, you fill out an application, and you're just put down like, well, you're, excuse me, back code, before you fill out the application, you have to have a farm contract number through our Farm Service Agency, that's another federally agency. But you fill out an application, and then you, the benefits of it is that you have to be, you have to be eligible for it. So being eligible, you have to have land control. So if you have a land control with ownership or if you lease or, and with the Pawnee Nation here, the people of the tribe and stuff that rent or lease grounds for the Pawnee, Pawnee Nation, they're not set to the same rules as something, it's like Joe Smith or something that walks in the office and he fills out the application with land control, because life in a contract, especially with the biggest one I mentioned, the Conservation Program, it's a five-year contract, they have to have five years, they start five years to have control of land, whereas they have, with the Pawnee Nation, they generally have people with a two-year lease, is that what it is here, usually two or three year lease? So we just go by with what these folks, because you guys are, how do you say it? I can't figure that word. Sovereign nation is what I'm trying to say. So anyway, these, here, here Pawnee, here, the resource concerns are, you know, because of this area, it's fire suppressed, there hasn't been fires like there was with Buffalo or Icy here and stuff like that. And now with all this, you know, all the different noxious, the basic weeds has taken over, and it's making things, it's destroying a lot of habitat, like for aboi, koel, you can't range, if you cattle livestock, it's, your ground is being rendered useless because there's so much like Easter red cedar and all that, you know. So these programs address that, like with brush management and with mechanical and, mechanical and chemical treatments to reduce some of these basic weeds and trees and stuff like that. But also we have like rotational grazing and stuff like that. We have like cross fences, you know, to help with your rotational grazing, we have suppress fire. We have all these various different practices through the environmental quality center program. But the Conservation Stewardship Program, that's a, that's a program that, it doesn't have so much on practice, but enhances what you're already doing already. Like if you're, if you've got like a lot of hedge rolls or something like that, and you want to enhance what you're already doing, you can put in another hedge roll, or you can, you can put in a shelter belt and stuff like that, these enhancements. And if you're, if you're grazing livestock, you can do enhancements like grazing, like deferred grazing, you know, and then you could, you have like, you have your mineral blocks, your feeding stations, you don't leave them in the same place, you move around so that way the cattle aren't staying in the same place and that they're eating so much. It's like just mentioning a few, a few enhancements that they have. There's one thing I want to, last thing I want to mention is the, is there's like the high tunnel practice, and you guys mentioned before about the greenhouses with some Dakotas or some places, yeah. We actually have a practice called the high tunnels, where the high tunnel is kind of like, like a greenhouse, but you, you can't have like benches and stuff like that for raising your crops, or your like, your strawberries, wherever you have in there, you have to have it on the ground, or you have raised beds, but you have to have it right on the ground. But you can, it's like you can build a big structure, just like a greenhouse, and actually they pay at least half the cost of the whole structure to put it up. But here's another thing, I just want to mention, you know, one thing, if, if you're a historically underserved individual, when you fill out the application, like for example, Hispanic, Native Americans, and, you know, and there's Asian Pacific, all of those historically underserved, as well as beginning farmers, when they fill out the application to get funded, they actually get a better cost share than the average Joe. I just, just wanted to tell you a few things, and if anyone of these guys, I got some copies of literature. And.
Yes, please.
But these are all programs that you have, and we can come up, count to your office account?
Yes, yep, we're, I work at the seven oh one, seven oh one Fifth Street here at Pawnee, that's.
Is that the new building?
Yes, brand new, we got the Native American flag, we got the green sign, service center there.
Well, thank you for.
Yes, definitely.
Very important.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, Daniel, thank you very much.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
You know, Carol, you know Carol Crouch?
Oh, yeah, I know Carol Crouch.
Yeah, she's, she's supposed to set up a meeting here with us in the next few weeks.
Oh, really?
Yeah, bring in, bring in a bunch of folks. Yeah, might join them.
It's middle of October?
Middle to late October now.
Okay, God, just, I'll tell you what, see, Little, Amy, would you, I'll email, just let me know that day. Would you, I'll email, just let me know that day when Carol comes up here.
Okay.
And I'll get it on my calendar, so I'll get...
All right.
Okay.
Because on, on my email, she said you're feeding?
What's that?
Hey. We will definitely have you here.
This is a regular meeting.
All right, okay. Well, thank you. We will move down to item number 10. This is approval of Resolution 16104, Unicot membership.
Real quick, Cindy, could you copy these for me and put it in my mailbox?
Yeah, sure. This is the paperwork that you gave us.
And I think Cindy sent it to her.
Yeah, Cindy called me today about this, and that's why I asked her to do a budget mod, because we didn't have any money. I did have some questions as you, as we had the discussion, and I don't want to get too much discussion on it, because you all know what my concerns are. I have several checks here for individual memberships, as well as the organizational membership for fifteen hundred, correct?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. And we had to move money around to, to move it into the subscriptions to even pay for it. I, if, if, I'm just concerned because it's been so inactive. It has not been an organization that has been, it's been, it's been an organization that's been around for a long time, but they've been defunct, then somebody will get into office, and then they'll rise up and get you all, get everybody together and, and try to reorganize. And like, I think it did some good, and, you know, when Chairman Barrett for the Citizen Potawatomi came, and you all rallied around that issue, and that was good. But after that, I think some people that were no longer in office, and, or stepped down for whatever reason, but nobody else carried it on. If it's, if it's, if there's, I would like to see more movement legislative, on, on the Oklahoma legislative side. I don't, I haven't heard, I've been in tribal government for many years, I've never heard of Unicot being a strong voice. So that's my concern. And I'm, I'm all for supporting something that's going to do, something that's going to benefit for the dollar amount that we're giving. And if they're going to, if they're, if you all are trying to reorganize again, where's, what's, where's our money going? What are we going to get for our money that, you know, the money that we're giving them, the two thousand, what do they do with it? Does anybody know? Can anybody that's been on that board answer that question? Bruce, you went to meetings and...
Yeah, I mean, I, when they have been active, and they haven't been active probably since March, March or April, and that's when both of the, this last spring, both of Chairman Coffey and then George Tiger were removed from office or resigned. But before that, you know, the, the committee was active, and as far as bringing the, the happenings there with the, especially Mary Fallon, laws that were being introduced there at the legislature, you know, they do, they do try to rally and, and provide input as to when, when certain laws and certain things are being introduced and, and on the floor, and, you know, they, they try to provide legal letters that you can, you know, write these congressmen and, and, and things. And, you know, the one who really is helpful is our Tribal Tax Commission, because they go to these things, and, you know, they are updated on the tribal tax laws, tax issues that are, that are coming up and things. So Lyle has always went, and, you know, and on behalf of the Tax Commission. And so have they been active the last, you know, six, six months? Yes, they have. And, and, you know, I've been voicing to whoever that I could, you know, Unicot needs to get going, because we're losing time, time we can't make up again. Like, like I said, it's, it's two thousand dollars and, and things, and we did have to move monies around to, to be able to, to get this membership, but I think it's worth it. I think it's worth it, because for one thing, it's, it's a voice that, that we need as Pawnees to, to voice with the others. One, one of the things that, that I've, I've seen in, in tribal government now is, is that so many times, the, the smaller tribes, us being a smaller tribe, you know, we, we don't have avenues of, of voice. So many times, the, the larger tribes, the civilized tribes and others, you know, they, they, they push through their issues, they, they, you know, have a lot of membership, a lot of votes, a lot of money, you know. Thing about them is location, location, location. They have good location, they got casinos, they got, you know, things like that. And, you know, for the smaller tribes, you know, I think we, we need other avenues to be able to, to get our voice heard. There's, there's, there's strength in numbers. There's strength in numbers. Unicot is a, is a vehicle that we can have strength in numbers. It's important, I believe, that we get some good people who will work on our behalf in leadership, in leadership. It's important, this votes that will be taken, that, that we, we get some good people in there who, who will be active, active and, and, you know, band the, band the tribes together, present issues to us and, and things. So, yes, it's, 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 it's money, the money was supposed to already have been budgeted, you know, but it, it wasn't there. There was a misunderstanding, I believe, from tax. So I'm, I'm still in approval of it. I, I think it has the, the possibility, like, like in anything, it has the possibility, and, and we have the hope that it does what it needs to do for us. It's up to us to make sure that it happens.
Well, can you, can you identify anything that they've done specifically for the benefit of the Pawnee Nation and the Pawnee people? Specific items that they've done to benefit our people and the Pawnee Nation? In the last four years? I don't know how long we've been, uh, membership.
I may be wrong on this, but did they not help out when we was doing the tobacco compacts?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, those, those are the things, and they're, they're coming up, the tobacco and the gas and the compressed natural gas, you know, those, those are coming up again. Mary Fallon is trying to renegotiate these compacts early, and, and, you know, I think they come up in 2020. And it seems like a long time, but she's trying to renegotiate them now. And, and, and what she does is divide and conquer. She divides and conquers the, the tribes, and we get unified, and then she'll, she'll, she'll get one to, to sign an agreement with the Oklahoma, and it undermines everybody else and, and things. And so, you know, they're, they're very out front on, on the compacts. And, and, you know, those, those are a major source of revenue to, to the Indian tribes.
So how many votes do we get in this organization for our membership? Or is that all based on individual memberships?
It's, it's based on tribal members.
Okay. So how many votes would we get as, as for Pawnee Tribe for our membership?
I mean, I, I don't know, I know there's a ratio there, but I don't know.
Don't the individuals get a vote?
Yeah, the individual gets a vote.
So those checks that you're signing on, each of those get a vote?
Yeah.
I just, I just think, you know, what, myself, you know, what Bruce is talking about's been a concern of mine, is, is the fact that, you know, Fallon wants to renegotiate, and what she's going to do is renegotiate to these bigger, larger tribes. And when she does that, and if they agree or whatever, then that kind of puts the pressure on, on the smaller tribes to kind of, you know, Fallon's going to feel that, you know, everyone else sort of follows suit and stuff. I think that's where this organization comes in. But, once again, you know, like what you're saying, Angela, if they're not being active and stuff, then, then what's the point? You know, and, and I think that's the biggest, for me, that's the biggest issue I have, is if they get somebody in there that's going to be active, and going to be, you know, really a voice for this whole organization, not, not just the organization, but for all the tribes, you know, so. I mean, it's not just Oklahoma tribes, you know, there's Texas and Kansas tribes as well, you know, so. My, myself, I've always been a fan of it, because you have some tribes that, you know, they, they don't really have much of anything. And so it helps them to be, you know, kind of, you know, being, being taken in, you know, under the wing, I guess, so to speak, you know, to try to help, so. But that's the whole biggest key, is if we've got people in there that's going to be able to do it, so.
I do have one other question.
I was just going to say that it goes along with numbers, doing things in numbers, going in powerful and having the numbers. And they could, we could use this organization too, to look at the issues that we're looking at with the Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers and the other issues that, you know, the consultation in Alpharetta, bring those back and start working. I think what we need to do as a council is to, and this was set up, originally started in 1971, went dormant, by Sid Cardney, I think, and went dormant for a while, came back strong in the nineties. But the problem has been sustainability and keeping that momentum going. And I think that, I, I would recommend that we join this year and send a message with our presidents, because that's how it was set up too, is the presidents, or the chairmans, or the chiefs of the organization, they're the ones that, that they really wanted, you know, to be the key members. And send a strong message with our president that we want to see sus- excuse me, sustainability, and that, you know, we want to see results. And give it this year.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that too, because that's one of the things I was thinking about, you know, you know, see what happens, you know, and if it's something that, you know, not doing anything, then we shouldn't have any part of it.
Can you carry that message, Bruce?
Okay.
Okay, one other question, though, before I sign these checks. Why does our AG have to be a member? Well, I got a check for his membership dues, I don't...
Well, he, he asked to go, and, and he wanted to find out what was going on as far as the organization, and get more information for the, for the nation.
Sorry, the Tax Commission, commissions specifically asked for you to be a member to negotiate the compacts and the tax legislation, I think it heads up on and stuff.
I know. But they were supposed to pay.
They were supposed to.
Two thousand, yeah.
Okay, well...
All right, so what we have is Resolution 16104, the Unicot membership. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Adrian seconds.
You know, Thamy, you're an alternate delegate, right?
No. According to this resolution, Donna Hare is on there.
Oh, is it, oh.
Yep.
Oh, yes.
Call for the vote.
Darryl Walken.
Yes.
Amy Littleson, no. Angela Thompson?
No.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Adrian Spottow, who's chief.
Yes. All right, Resolution 16104 passes. Move to Resolution, no, approval of amendment of Resolution 1693, TDC fee to trust.
When we officially passed this resolution, we need to trust process with BIA, the BIA solicitors came back and said that we needed to include language about where the funds were coming from, and so we added the paragraph to this, this resolution.
Yes.
That comes from TDC is paying, paying...
That was almost unchanged.
For, for getting it in, or they purchased the land, and they're getting it into the trust.
Explain that again, sorry.
We passed Resolution 1693 for TDC to begin the process of putting the land that was purchased for fee to trust. We submitted the application off to the BIA. The BIA solicitors came back and said we needed to include a paragraph that stated where the funds were coming from to... Yeah. Where, where the funds were coming from and who was purchasing the land.
Okay.
And that, that we inserted the language that said, "TDC purchased the land from Mr. or Mrs. Bolble using PDC funds."
So we're just amending the, the resolution to add this paragraph?
Yes.
It is for their Realty Office.
For the BIA.
Yes.
Now, this is for the, where the expansion's going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is 1693?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve 1693 fee to trust.
Motion's made by Adrian, is there a second? 1693. It's in, Carol?
It's not, it's actually not the expansion, it's the land order that they purchased. That's the land that's going to trust the expansion still on the existing...
Oh, it's for, yeah, it's for fees.
I was saying, where's that go?
Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. So we have a motion.
I'll second.
And Donna seconds. Call for the vote.
Darryl Walken.
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes. Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Adrian Spottow, who's chief.
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
All right, we come to number 12, which is approval of PDC budget mod number eight.
This was in regard to making the adjustments for the Unicot membership, I'm sorry. Do they have that copy?
Right, it's sent by email.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just adding money into the subscriptions to pay for the Unicot membership.
Okay, we can entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to approve.
Motion's made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Adrian seconds. Call for the vote.
Darryl Walken.
Yes.
Angela Thompson?
Yes.
Adrian Spottow, who's chief.
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Yes.
Amy Littleson, yes.
So that is approved, item number 12, budget mod number eight. Okay, we come to open forum. Item number 11.
I just have a couple of things. Where are we at on the existing land into trust? Did we do the letter to the BIA? I think it's in our ballpark, and I believe council made a decision to move that forward to get the, an appraisal done? The appraisal on the existing, where Stonewaf is, we, council made a decision to move forward. My, the letter should have been sent to the BIA?
It's, it's at the BIA, it's in the BIA's hands to do that somehow.
So have they done the appraisal? Or what's the update?
The update is not that I'm aware of. I think they're working on this, this current one, and then maybe they'll do this another one next, but I don't know. I haven't had any airplay, but I can ask Jeremy.
Yeah, would you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Also, and what Thamy brought up about Ms. O'Brien, I would really like to honor her. She has been a major supporter of raising our corn, watching our corn. I know my son, Joe Michael, had an opportunity to spend two summers with her, and they were just very good to him as well, and with all that she's done for the tribe in, in trying to preserve our Pawnee corn and, and crops up there in Nebraska, I mean, that's a lot of work. preserve our Pawnee corn and crops up there in Nebraska, I mean, that's a lot of work. That's a lot of work, and she's, her and her friends up there have volunteered, and I think we need to honor her, whether if it's with the hand game and try to, if the council's willing, I mean, I could try to find the dollars to do that.
I'm all for it.
I agree.
Sounds good.
I agree.
Great, thank you.
You might contact Deb, she just kind of seemed to, I was telling her, I said, "Now, you know you're going to take some groceries, whatever sticks you're going to use," so she was just like, I mean, she should know that already, but she was just kind of real unsure, and I guess she was trying to look for some reassurance through the chiefs and they told her to go uptown, so.
Yeah, well, maybe we could work through the CRV to get some guidance on it, because I'm not that familiar with that piece of it as well either. Also, one other thing, this is on the personnel, my son is fighting Saturday, I hope you all can make it, if you can, if cannot, just be in prayer for him and us on Saturday. Thank you.
Oh, Bruce?
Yes.
Because I went to the lead conference over there and Janie Hip was presenting over there, and so I made a point of going up and visiting with her after that conference, and I was asking her if she had been in contact with anybody from Pawnee or anybody here or Tribal Development Corporation had tried to contact her, and she said she hadn't heard anything. Then she said, "No, wait, I think I got an email this morning." So, anyway, you know, we've been hounding Roger about an ag plan and we asked him to contact her, but I guess he finally made contact just this morning. But I asked her if she was interested in still working with us in developing an agriculture plan, and she said she's very interested. She said, "I'm very busy, but I'm very interested," and she said, "Shoot me some dates that you all might want me to come over and visit with you about it," and she said, "I'll see if I'm free." She said, "November is totally out of the question, it's already booked up for her." She said, I said, "Well, what about October?" And she said, "Throw me some dates." She said, "I'm just, I'm real busy." And so, you know, I would like us to pursue that, you know, because she's still, she's still interested, she's just really gung ho, and she'll get you enthused about, you know, what she's doing and how she's doing it, and so I'd really like to, you know, have this meeting happen, you know, and sad to say, you know, as far as I'm concerned with PDC, if they think they're ideal, they're not for it. And I think we need to quit going through Roger, we need to go straight to the board, because I think everything's turned around to me as far as that goes, you know, we should be going to the board anyway, and the board counts Roger for what he should be doing. And I really think we need to jump on this bandwagon, and just like what this gentleman said over here, you know, they have programs and things that could be helping us to start going in that direction, so we really need to get serious about. And another thing that Janie Hip brought up in her presentation was the fact that she said, "It just really gets me upset when I call tribes and I ask to speak to the Agriculture Department," and she said, and then all you hear is crickets. She said on the other line, and she said, you know, she said, "People, we need to start getting those ag departments put into place." And a lot of the tribes that presented too talked about, you know, started with their youth and their culture, and through that, then they were, they were able to move forward through 4H and things like that, so. So, I would like us to get a date down now. Maybe, maybe you could send out the notices or something, and I know we're going to, us three is going to be gone to the NCAI conference, so, or not next week, but the week after, and that'll be all week. So, maybe you could, you know, start sending out the message, shooting out, you know, some dates, so we could get something set up.
When we schedule her, she's going to expect results, and we have to be ready. We have to be ready to produce. And the other thing is, I agree with what you say about going directly to the boards, I think we should do that with all of them, because when you go to the manager, you're putting them in a precarious position, because they have their board of directors to report to, and then they're here with the council, so I think it needs to be the chairman of the boards that who we're dealing with.
Yes.
And who are reporting to us.
I agree, I agree. I got an email, just to let the council aware, that the college is wanting to exercise its independence and pull their NATTEP funds from the tribal government side. I've asked some questions from Andrew, and he's going to follow up on the governing docs and get some answers, and so, once I get those, I'm sure I can forward them on to everybody, or he can't either way, but so just be aware that that's an issue.
I don't even have a finance department working.
He's a third party.
Real quick on Janie here, you know, Bruce, you and I, you know, we talked about this when we first was in office, and when she did her interview, not interview, but her presentation, first met her down there at Sovereignty Symposium and stuff, and, you know, you and I discussed then where we'd be at now if we'd have just followed through with it, you know, I mean, I think she, you know, then, and I still have those contracts, you know, I was looking at them the other day, she wanted a $50,000 donation with $10,000 each year for five years, and then once that was brought to the table, and no one wanted to do it, but, you know, you know, one grant, she said she could get the USDA grant, you know, it's 360,000, you know, she said she could help build this pool, help build a, what else was she said, a museum, all that stuff, you know, and I just, it just baffles me and stuff, and so I'm all for, you know, like what she said, Donna, you told me before, you know, she, you know, she wants, she means business, and I'm all about it, you know, I mean, we need to, we need to be active on this, you know, and I'm disappointed that Roger dropped the ball on this again, you know, so, I don't know, I know he's busy with stuff though, but that's all, I'm ready to go eat him right now.
Technical assistance is not free, and what she's giving us, a whole university to back up this plan and come here and help us, $50,000 is not, is a drop in the bucket to the benefits that we could receive from this type of project.
Exactly.
So, and it's not only just, it's not just 50,000 at once, we can just do it over a period of time of that time, so I look at it as an investment and an opportunity to bring things to the tribe.
It's getting late, I'm tarding, I'm going to even make room.
I did have a few things I wanted to tell the council, I want to thank you, council,
for putting this proposal out so that the elders could go to Niagara, actually, West End this year, and it was, it was really keen, thank you all so much for holding the elders, because they enjoy, I say they, they, the elders, they enjoyed themselves, oh, it's just good to see that, it's a camaraderie, and it was wonderful, just thank you, thank you truly.
I want to thank them for going and representing us.
They did a good job too. Let's see, what else am I here? Oh, I wanted to compliment the tribe because our Iroquois relatives came down, and man, it was a keen weekend, you all, it was good. They came down, brought, had a keen hand game, but I got to tell a Bruce story, but I'm not going to talk about it, I'll tell it later. Keen, I do, I was looking for that bee.
Yeah.
They came down, brought, and we had a hand game over there in the Rome Chief, and then Saturday, they had the skeetie dance over at the camp round, and then Sunday, we met them over here at Rome Chief, and that afternoon, we had the dance over there around us. We got keen facilities, I'm glad to say that, we got keen facilities. I was so glad that we had a place where we could take these folks, and it was a good place. And so, I just wanted to tell you all that, to compliment the tribe on the facilities, because I know this has been a long time coming, over many years, and there's a lot of people that had a head, and a lot of people that aren't here no longer with us that still had a head in this buildings that we have there, so those are, those are good things, good things that the tribe did. And I want to make another point too about the Iroquois. I had an opportunity, the way they set up that pipe ceremony, I got to sit in on a pipe ceremony, and it was over here at the Rome Chief, and it was nice the way they set it up, because they, Adrian and them, they had the men sitting on the floor here in the middle, the Iroquois on that side, and the Pawnees, Pawnee men on this side, and the Rome men on that side, and then they had these kind of chairs set up on both sides, and so we all got to go in there, women and everybody, got to go in there, and we got to hear those elders speak, the Iroquois elders, and then our Pawnee elders, and I just felt so good, you all, and I came out of that thing, and was cleansing the words that we got to hear. And I really was encouraged for our use. I think the Lord's going to use our culture to give self-esteem to our youth so that they can go off in a good way. But I'm going to tell you something that you all, some of you are not going to like, but I'm going to say it anyway, but you know me. If we're going to be able to embrace our culture, everybody's going to have to hear it. I, as a Pawnee woman, woman got to go in there, I got to hear what they said, and I told Herb afterwards, I said, "Thank you for opening this up so we can all hear it," because you're not going to be able to move your culture forward unless everybody has that opportunity to embrace it, to learn about it, to be a part of it, and then we're going to capture it, we're going to keep it, we're going to move it forward, and it's going to be one of our strengths. So, I just want to say that. And I talked to Donna when we were cooking over here, suddenly, she said something to me, she said that she went to a pipe ceremony, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, at Yankton Sioux, and they had their women in there, they had their women in there, and they, the women were a part of that pipe ceremony, and then next, they turned it over to the Pawnees, and the Pawnees, at that time, all the women had to leave. That's divisive, as me. Now, I know that a lot of these, you all say, are based on old ways, but I'm just not sure about that. And women have a vital part in this tribe. We are the carriers of life. We have stepped in when our government came down and ripped the hearts out of our men. The women stood firm and carried on for us. If we look at our own history, we've got a lot of women that have broken a lot of ground for our people. So, I want you all to know that I think women have a strong place, and you can see just at this table here, women have a strong place in our tribe, and I'm proud to be a Pawnee woman. And I broke a lot of ground when I first ran for council, and I was the first women executive director of the tribe, and when I first ran for council, you know, women in Pawnee's way, you can't get up and talk in front of people, you can't even do that, and so it was really tough back there, but Edith Beersley, and I think Helen, and Elizabeth, and myself, some of the first ones that were women on the council. I hated to run, but Grandma at the Roddy Inn and my grandma at the Osborne, they encouraged me, they encouraged me in public to run, and when I got that encouragement, the first time I ran, I didn't get encouragement. After I got on air and we did a few things, then they came in and they supported me, and then I knew that I was confirmed, it was, I had the support of those old women. So, I tell you all that to say, be inclusive. I know we got ways back then, but this is a new time too, this is a new time, like we told those Iroquois people, this was our first presentation, it's a new time, we've got a new pipe, that pipe was quarried by our own people, Erin Prim from California, Adrian and John Michael Nychy went up and quarried that stone, way dug down in there, hammered it out, brought that stone up, took it to California, and Prim put that, put it together, and that's the pipe that they used, and it was a good building up there. So, I just wanted you all to be there and say that, and if anybody don't agree with me, that's okay, but I've got something standing on, so, thank you all.
Wasn't it Theda back with you guys in the 70s, Theda Starr?
Yes, she was, yeah, Theda Starr, she was mine. And then the only reason why the women got to witness that is because that's the way the Iroquois are with their women.
Yeah.
They had that respect for them, that they left and witnessed those pipe ceremonies, so, they said because of that, then they, that we could also go and, we could also go and witness that pipe ceremony. So, I was thankful too, because I really, I felt the spirit of that, and it brought tears to my eyes too, and I was, I felt really blessed leaving from there, you know. But then again, you know, if the Pawnee men just do that, maybe they need the blessing more than we do. That's what, you know, that's what I think, you know.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't the Iroquois that made that happen that way, it was actually Herb, you know, we discussed that, you know, because we didn't know what they were going to do, we didn't know what the Iroquois, we didn't know how things was going, everything was new, like I had talked about, you know, so I said, you know, this is an opportunity, I said, you know, I don't want to make it to where it's where people can't be involved, you know, I want people to sit and witness that. This, to me, that was an historic event, it was something that historic, the whole thing, not just that little part, but the whole thing, and I couldn't foresee people just standing around outside or whatever, you know, what was in there, so, we talked about that, we said, "Let's do it," we didn't know how people was going to respond to it or what, and then there was a few negative, you know, things, you know, and stuff, but we did it, and I think everybody was, you know, truly blessed by it, you know, so I'm thankful, that's the best, you know, we could do, so, we did the best that we could do, so I'm thankful for it.
Thank you all for all that you did, it's very much appreciated, people got a blessing, blessings, blessings are still out there, they're still letting their way, the lives, the dead, so thank you all, really. I'd like to.
Make a motion, will you? Okay, before we close, one more thing, council meeting, this next council meeting coming up in October, the scheduled council meeting is the 12th, however, Famie and Darryl and myself, we're going to be in Phoenix. Now, I don't have a problem with you all running council, but just wanted to bring that up.
Me, Darryl, me, Bruce.
So, you know, if, you know, we wanted to look at another date, that'd be okay, or, you know, Darryl could run it, oh, no, Darryl can't run it, that would be, Angela would run it.
We also need another date for Janie Hip, Famie's trying to get that tonight from us, right?
Yeah, either that or Cynthia, because that's a notice to, through the mail, so we could, we'd get available dates.
So, what would you suggest? Can we move that council meeting earlier in the week, Monday, Tuesday?
No, we're not.
No, we're gone, we're gone all week.
Yeah, we're leaving Saturday, I'm flying outside.
So, you know, we could.
Be back.
Well, it's the 29th, isn't it?
I would suggest that if we have something that's really pressing, that needs to be, you know, addressed, then we can do that, if not, then we could entertain it, push it to another time, that's my suggestion, that's my thought. Actually, even if it's something really easy, then we can do that too, so.
Yeah, I don't, it don't bother me to chair, but, I don't know, I don't know, I mean, the 12th, because I've already got my calendar for October, I try to leave Wednesday, Thursdays, and Friday, and Monday, my Mondays and Tuesdays are pretty well booked in the month of October, so, I don't, I know I have a budget committee meeting scheduled on the 6th, and I've already got four items in there for that day, so.
What about pushing it back a week to the 19th? And then, are you here the 19th?
Well, here's the thing. Well, here's the thing, then. Listening to Angela, can we have the meeting on the twentieth during the morning? That's on a Thursday. You said it's later in the week? On the twentieth. And if possible, let's just meet once, since it's almost...it's there. And the reason why I'm asking for the twentieth is because we have the BIA meetings on the seventeenth and eighteenth.
And then the Oklahoma Healthcare Authority on the nineteenth.
And those guys will be there. And then I have the IHS tribal consultation with Mary Smith, the IHS director, on the nineteenth.
Then we have the quarterly meeting.
In DC?
No, here. It's in Oklahoma. She's here. So the twentieth?
If we can get through it, because I've got to teach that day.
What time do you got to teach?
I have to leave by eleven thirty.
Well, if we can get...
I teach at twelve thirty. Takes an hour to get one.
It has classes on lunch.
Hey, that's the prime time. Everybody's like, "How did you get a classroom that time?" That's the prime time. I don't have it on that calendar.
I don't have no problem with that twentieth myself.
I don't have anything on the...I mean, no, I don't have a problem with the twentieth. Let me just see what items I have and see if they can wait until.
I want to thank you all out there for hanging with us.
Audit's gonna be okay until that. That's pushing it pretty far. We got a payment for the auditor.
Go ahead with the meeting.
We've got...
I'm all right with that meeting too on the twelfth, if you want to do that.
I mean, can it wait till the twentieth? Probably.
Okay.
I'm game for whatever's on the agenda, Jamie.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at what else on the agenda for the budget committee and to see if it can hold off until the twentieth. That would be the budget. So it would be the only thing.
That's all.
And the burial fund, carryover. We need to look at that. The budget committee's gotta look at that first. Well, okay. But yeah, I just have some questions if we really do have it because of the shortfall last year. Either day, whatever you want to do.
Did you have some, Tiffany?
Two announcements.
Two announcements?
Two announcements. One, just want to update the MSPI grant. We did receive it. So SAV will have the MSPI grant. So that is the cooperation between education, cultural resources, and DHCS. That's a four-year grant. Also, a minute before, asking about the resolution you all did for Title VI. We are in need of elders filling out their surveys. So if you or your family members or you know someone that is sixteen over and that is willing to fill out the survey, we need to complete a hundred and thirty. And our application is due in December. So if you know you can take any, I'll have some in my office, and DHCS and Dev will have some. So let me know if you know someone or if your relatives will be willing to go out and get them because we definitely need to reach that hundred and thirty number. So put that out there. If you know someone, please feel free to email through Andrew or myself. I just wanted to give those two updates for DHCS.
Are you mailing those out? Are you gonna mail those out, surveys, too?
We would...we can. We can mail them out. We're preferred, you know. They are going out with the mills for the homebound. They are there for the congregants. And then those who aren't going to either one, we are willing to, you know, just let us know. And we can bring them and put them in the offices. Or, you know, you or your relative knows somebody, please just...
Do they have to live here?
Yes.
Okay. So as of right now, then, on the twentieth, this one will have the council meeting?
Mm-hmm.
If that's all right? Okay? All right?
Are you okay with that?
I'll be gone in a while, so.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's...the MSPI, it really makes me feel good that we got that grant. And, you know, I went up to DC, and I had a day, and I ran up there and talked to them and told them Pawnees really needed it. And also voiced my concern about all the competitive grants that they're doing, you know, and things, and making it rough on the smaller tribes. But anyway, I'm glad. All right. Praise the Lord on that one. It's a good one. All right. Adrian, we'll go back to your motion?
Add anything else? No, I'll make a motion. We'll be done.
We got a motion second. All those that favor say yes. All right. Let's go. Have hamburger helper.